We'll call the City Council Work Session Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kristen Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Aguangeli.
Here.
Bining.
Here.
Germany.
Here.
Lomore.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
We have two items on the agenda for the work session unless there's additional after that, but Mr. Pastu, I'll just go right to you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Sir, Mr. Sell, if you would introduce our auditors with Plant Moran.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel Ed Sell, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director. Tonight, we have our auditors here from Plant Moran, Bill Bricky, Rumzi Abdallah, and Jacoff Black are here to present the June 30th, 2019 audited financial statements. So I'll turn it over to them and let them take it away.
Thank you, Ed, and good evening, everyone. So I'm Bill Bricky with Plant Moran. I'm the audit partner on your account and here to talk about the audit for the year ended June 30, 2019. So hopefully, there's three separate deliverables that you would have received in your packet. We have the comprehensive annual financial report, which is the large bound document. We have our end of audit letter, which is a report to you on the audit process itself. And then finally, we have the graph presentation, which we passed out tonight. Before I get started, the first thing I want to make sure to do is thank Ed Sell and your entire team for their assistance throughout the audit project. We are out at the city for about three or four weeks, sort of interrupting their day-to-day activities in order to complete the audit, and your staff does a great job getting ready for us and helping us throughout the process, so we certainly appreciate all of their cooperation. The first thing I want to talk about is our main deliverable to you, which is included in page one of the financial report, and that's our opinion on your financial statements. And the city did receive what we refer to as an unmodified opinion again in the current year, and basically means these financial statements are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. It's the highest form of assurance we can provide, so you did receive that unmodified opinion again in the current year. The other thing I always like to point out is that the city does go above and beyond with its financial reporting. So the city prepares what we refer to as a comprehensive financial report, and this is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association. And for the 19th year in a row, the city will receive an award for excellence in financial reporting, and I think it just shows your commitment to quality financial reporting as well as transparency. So the state of Michigan does not require you to do this, CAFR as it's often referred to. So again, the city does a little extra financial reporting to receive that award. So the first thing I want to do is spend just a minute on our end of audit letter. So hopefully, you know, you have that, should be stapled, 10-page letter. And this letter really contains two separate areas. The first is our required communications to you under the auditing standards, and the second section is really just some legislative and informational items. So beginning on page three, this letter really goes through our responsibilities and your responsibilities under the auditing standards, and this is actually a follow-up to our letter that we send out in July related to our audit plan. And I'm happy to report that, you know, we had no deviations from our original audit plan, and we actually have no audit findings to report to you tonight. So very clean audit, no findings. The only section I really want to draw your attention to begins on page four. There's a section here called corrected and uncorrected misstatements, and it sounds worse than it is. So again, our responsibility is to report all matters to you, and in this case, we identified three, what I'll call insignificant accounting matters, but they are, we'll say, uncorrected misstatements that we need to report to you. If they were material, they would be an audit finding or something like that. They're immaterial, but we just have to explain those, so I want to go over those just briefly. The first relates to an accounting procedure that the city uses. So in your major street fund, you actually record, I'll call it grants or capital assets received from either the federal government or MDOT. You record a revenue and expense. The net is zero on fund balance, but the accounting rules would say you should not report that gross. You should not report those because it's through MDOT or the federal government in this case. But the city, for tracking purposes, has decided to report all of that as revenue and expense. Again, the net impact is zero, but technically, it's not in compliance with the rules. And then items two and three included on the bottom of page four really just relate to some fund classifications. So you have a cemetery fund, and that's reported as a private purpose trust. In our opinion, that would better be reported as a permanent fund. Again, doesn't really change anything except for the placement of that fund in your financial statements. And then similarly, your building authority fund is reported as an enterprise fund, and again, we think that would be better be reported as a governmental fund. So all of these things are, again, immaterial, small items, but we are required to report them to you, so that's what we do here in section four. But on balance, when it comes to the audit process itself, very clean, no findings. The next section, which I really won't go over, begins on page six. Again, this is legislative and informational items. We have covered all of these in detail with management, and we have included them in here just for your reference, and certainly, if there's any questions on them, we could expand on them. So with that, what I'd like to do now is I'm going to have Rumzi come up, and we're going to go through the graph presentation. This really is just a summary of some of the key financial data that's included in the comprehensive financial report. We're trying to spare you going through all 150 pages of this and tried to summarize this into about 10 slides or so. So with that, Rumzi.
Thank you, Bill. As Bill mentioned, the fun part now, going through some of the numbers. Clicker here. So we will start by taking a look at, on slide number one, this graph represents general fund revenue on a budgetary basis, looking at a three-year trend. You'll see that, looking at the different categories, that most revenue remained consistent over the last three years with one exception. The state sources line item has actually decreased in the current year, and as you'll see with a couple of these slides, the trend is that, if you recall from last year, the DNR Trust Fund Grant, which is revenue along with matching expense from the state, began in 2018, which was about $2.2 million last year, and this year, it's about $500,000. So that's really the biggest change from last year to this year, but it's offset with matching expense. Overall, property tax revenue continues to be the largest, the primary revenue source of the general fund consisting of 70% of the source there. On the next slide, we take a look at the taxable value trend, and you'll notice we take a look at this slide every year, and it really is depicted to show the decline in property tax values that started in 2008 through 2011, when the market sort of bottomed out. And you can see that, obviously, with the limits of Headley and Proposal A, that property tax values can only increase by a certain amount. That's why it's taking so long to recover back up to those 2008 values. Now, the key thing to note here is that with a 2% increase, we project that by next year, the city would have finally gotten back to those 2008 taxable values. However, the big thing to note with this is this does not include any appeals, so significant taxpayers filing appeal, any decline in taxable value, or any other losses are not factored into that. So it's just really intended to show the slow recovery in property tax values from 2008. This slide takes a look at general fund expenditures. So we looked at revenues, now we're flipping over to the expenditure side, and you can see, again, similar to what we had with the revenue side, the biggest decline is going to be related to the DNR Trust Fund Grant. You always like to see expenses decreasing, so that's good. However, the DNR Trust Fund Grant is down. The activity is down this year, and expense is just as it was on the revenue side, and you can see that in the community development section. Aside from that, revenue trends or expense trends were relatively consistent this year. On slide four, it represents those same expenditures for the current year, but in the form of a pie chart. The purpose of this slide is to show that 45% of the expenditures, 45 cents of every dollar, are going towards public safety in the general fund. There is one caveat to note with that. So the debt service slice of the pie there is mostly the OPEB-related debt. So the accounting rules require us to report that in the debt service category. However, I would like to note that because that is mostly public safety, so you're also paying most of that for the public safety portion of the OPEB debt as well. The next highest revenue or expense category in the general fund would be general government at 15%. I've mentioned the DNR Trust Fund Grant a few slides, so we figured we would do a five-year revenue and expense history trend without the DNR Trust Fund Grant in there. So really, you can see that as the revenue sources for the city have gone up and gone down, in some cases, the city has been able to be a little bit fluid on the expense side and reduce expenses when needed. And then, in coming up in the next couple of slides, we'll kind of explain the surplus in the current year and the city's plan for that, and what the city has begun to plan for with potential decreases in property tax values. On this slide, you take a look at a two-year comparison and the differences in the fund balance categories. The very first category is probably the one that had the most significant change, which this represents the non-spendable fund balance. This relates primarily to the real estate inventory that's held in the general fund. That's the high property north of Mason Run. The reason it increased this year is because the general fund paid off the debt that was associated with it, the advance, and that changes the calculation of the fund balance, so it's no longer reduced by the amount of that debt. The key thing on this slide, the key component of fund balance that I think we should probably pay the most attention to is the unassigned fund balance, which we'll look at again in a couple of slides. So I mentioned surplus, and this slide takes a look at the city's planned use for the general fund surplus for 2020. The city's been very proactive, setting aside several projects, encumbrances, and there's a couple of projects, and then there's also the set aside for potential property tax losses for 2020 of $1.5 million there. So a few slides ago, I mentioned the unassigned fund balance and kind of the importance of it in the context of fund balance. So on this slide, we have a four-year trend, an analysis of fund balance, and for 2019, you'll see four bars. The first one is going to represent total expenditures in the general fund, which were about $19.2 million. The second slide, it represents the fund balance at the end of the year. Then the third bar, the goldish color one, is the unassigned fund balance, and that's the number that really is the more important number. And the fourth slide is the 2020 budgeted expenditures for the general fund. Everyone always wants to know, what's our percent? What's a good percent to be at? This is what essentially, this is usually what is being referred to as the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures for the subsequent year. It is the city's policy to try to keep at least 15% of the subsequent year's expenditures in unassigned fund balance. So you can see that this year, at the end of the year, the city is, with that $3.8 million, that comes out to about 18%. So you're not at the minimum. You're definitely within the city's policy of exceeding the 15% minimum there. So kind of to that point, just to kind of wrap up the fund balance discussion, so the city does have adequate unassigned fund balance that exceeds the minimum percentage, however, with the DTE pending appeal and with potential other losses in property tax values, it's important to be cautious with this number. The city did have a small increase in property tax revenue this year. The city fully funded the actuarially determined contribution for the pension plan and the OPEB plan. Pension plan is now 90% funded, and the OPEB plan, the retiree healthcare, is up to 95.3% funded. The city had effective budgeting in the current year. The water and sewer rates appear to be in line to cover the costs of operating the system. And the city had an aggressive capital funding program, and what I mean by that is the city took advantage of federal grants, state grants, to acquire capital assets. Of course, anytime you do that, you're kind of bound to what the grant requirements are for, and you can't always rely on those sources. So the city is taking advantage when those are available to the city. You'll also note that in the business-type activities, there was a large capital asset addition of $23.7 million. The city didn't actually purchase $23.7 million in water and sewer lines. Those were actually donated from Raisinville Township, which is part of that agreement as the city is providing that service. So that really concludes the, kind of the highlights of the financial statements that we wanted to go over, and I'd be happy to open it up for any questions on anything that we spoke about.
If there's questions from Council. John?
Can you go back to the slide that talks about the various fund balances?
This one?
The one before that. I'm looking at the one that, that one right there. When you talk about unassigned, that does not include, I'm assuming, the budget stabilization nor the assigned future tax reduction fund. So in total, we have 3.8 plus 1.5 plus the 2 million.
Correct, yes.
And that doesn't, when you add those up, that's not the 18%.
Correct.
The 18% is just the unassigned.
Mm-hmm.
Does not include the budget stabilization.
Correct.
Okay. If you were to include the budget stabilization, then we are probably, what, in the low 20s? I'll let you guys figure it out real fast.
We're not good enough.
Yeah, I would venture to say, you know, you'd be close to, yeah, 20, 28%?
20, 20%?
28.
Oh, 28, okay.
You have the budget stabilization fund to the unassigned, you need about 28%.
Okay, great. That's the number that I like to hear. Yeah, total, yes.
All the items that are there, but from this, we understand what this graph and list means, but there's other things that the council in the past has retained.
What, Your Honor, may I, what do you find? Two questions. How are other communities that you work with doing relative to their fund balances? Unassigned fund balances, let's just focus on that.
Sure. You know, I think what we've seen is a lot of communities around have really stabilized, and they're in the, you know, I would say, 10% to 20% range of fund balance. I think the one unique thing about Monroe, one thing that makes you, you know, kind of sets you apart from many other communities, is the funding of your legacy costs. So many, many communities throughout the state of Michigan and across the country are struggling with the funding percentages on both pension and retiree healthcare, and in both scenarios, you're 90-plus percent funded. Now, I recognize for the retiree healthcare, the OPEB liability, you've issued bonds to help fund that, but many communities are oftentimes 0% funded in retiree healthcare or certainly less than 10%. So I think that the work you've done there certainly, you know, sets you apart. And then, as far as fund balance, you know, I would say you have a good level of fund balance, but certainly recognizing that, you know, you have this large issue out there with DTE, and having fund balance will give you time to deal with that. So when I think about fund balance, I always say you have to have the unassigned number. That's just for cash flow. And then, the other fund balance relates to what are your future needs, and having that will allow you time to make changes in your structure to deal with something like a large decrease in your tax revenue.
Okay, great. Thank you. Nice explanation.
Other questions from council members?
You know, once in a while, make an interesting find, find a finding for us. That's okay. I appreciate it. No, this is a great audit.
It is. I appreciate your comments for the staff. I know that they're well-prepared, and they look forward to when you get here to, you know, go through items and answer questions, but also put forward the report that's here that really is easily understood, in my opinion. I'm not an audit person, I'm not a finance person, but I think as you walk through this on the, this evening's presentation, but also the details are there for those who want to kind of get down to some of the lines and additional costs, but very much appreciate the presentation and the information, and thanks to the staff as well. Mr. Pastu, I don't know if there's anything further you may have?
No, other than just a great appreciation for the working relationship we have with Plant Moran and also with Ed and his staff in preparing it. Very fortunate as a manager to know that there's timely, reliable financial information, and, you know, the planning and the work that goes into it is greatly appreciated as well, so.
I think Andrew might have a question or comment.
I noticed you guys had a slide on, we just surpassed, or we are due to surpass this year, our 2008 property tax levels, property tax values. I'm wondering how our property tax, how our property value growth compares to that of other communities. One of the findings we had this year in looking with the DDA was some of the anemic growth that was taking place there. We were struggling to keep up with inflation in terms of property values. I'm wondering where Monroe ranks among the other communities that you deal with.
Well, I think what we've seen is certainly what happens in a, you know, relatively developed city like Monroe and others around is, really, it's been that, you know, inflationary increase in taxable value. So I think you're, you know, very comparable with many of the surrounding, I'll say, older cities. You know, one of the things that I'd say developing cities gets is they get more than inflation. The only way to get taxable value to go up by more than inflation is to build new stuff. And so certainly, when you're in a community that's pretty much built out, you're going to be hampered by Proposal A and Headley, which say you can only grow by inflation. So I think you're following a trend that we see for many developed cities throughout the state of Michigan. You know, when you get into some developing cities, they'll see larger taxable value growth, but as far as taxable value, which is used to figure out your revenue, it's been, you know, you're kind of in the mix with all other surrounding communities.
Your Honor, I think the point that you just made is a point that we discussed two weeks ago at the council meeting, that the state legislature does very little for local units of government in terms of public finance because of tax Proposal A and Headley. They cap us on either end. So even though we may see the real estate growth occurring in the market, Headley pushes that back down, correct?
Absolutely correct.
So you get, we get hit on both ends by what the Proposal A and what the Headley amendment does.
That's exactly right. So I think, you know, there's certainly oftentimes misunderstandings as far as how a community gets, raises tax revenue. And so what this graph tells me is, you know, essentially, assuming same millage, a taxpayer today is paying about the same tax bill as they did in 2008 because of the way it works. And oftentimes, people think that, oh, if you sell a bunch of houses and you reset your SEV and taxable value, that the city would see a windfall from sort of churning real estate, but that's when Headley kicks in and ultimately rolls back your millage so that the city will only see an inflationary increase in your revenue stream.
Right.
So I think that's the part that is often misunderstood, because you're right. So we often say Headley and Proposal A act together to really stifle the revenue that a city can generate absent new growth or new millage.
To carry it forward, because I want to use this as an opportunity, because this is being taped, what taxpayers have to understand in the city, based on what you're saying, is communities like Monroe that are relatively built out, the only way we're ever really going to see any significant numerical growth in our tax base is from either redevelopment projects, large redevelopment projects, or new constructions versus communities that are like in the perimeter of Grand Rapids, Traverse City, the areas that are growing. They have new growth, new construction, and they're benefiting, but the way that the state has tax policy, communities like Monroe, Adrian, Downriver Communities, E-course, River Rouge, it's going to be awful hard for us to get out of that barrel because we're already developed.
That's exactly, exactly right. Exactly right.
Okay.
I'll follow, because it gets to the conversation. I'll just say, in the past two years for the council, when there were opportunities that have presented themselves for redevelopment and new build, and I think the council and the community is well aware of some of what those projects are, and that's the opportunities that we have to be prepared for, and as the council and the staff has worked on, I'll say, preparing for that and stepping into those and to make them come to, as we get into the next year, looking for those new build opportunities on existing property and redevelopment. So that's where I look forward to next year also.
So, Your Honor, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Do you have anything further? Other comments, questions? Very good. Thank you, as always. A pleasure to see you all three.
Nice job. Nice job, Ed.
Vince, next item.
The challenge with the revenues is a wonderful segue into the next topic of talking about the capital improvements, millage, and our police station that I had talked about at the conclusion of our CIP presentation two weeks ago. And so where I'm going with that is, given the financial challenges that we have, and certainly, as Mr. Bricky indicated, you know, kind of the stifling aspect of our tax policy in Michigan and the growth of our taxes, you know, we've been significantly challenged to continue our infrastructure investment, and clearly, you know, with DTE being an uncertainty out there, even more so going forward. So, you know, one of the recommendations at the conclusion of the presentation two weeks ago was for City Council to consider an ad hoc committee that would look into the merits of putting on the November 2020 ballot, consideration related to a new police station, and then separately, consideration to, of a dedicated capital improvements, a millage that would be focused on, you know, roads, park improvements, trails, sidewalks, general infrastructure that we, you know, know long-term that we're going to be challenged with. So without going into a lot more detail, my request is just to consider forming this ad hoc committee. Earlier today, that Clerk Treasurer Lavoy and I talked about it, if you're inclined to put any ballot proposal, that would amend the charter, that it would need to be probably adopted no later than July to get to the governor's office and the attorney general's office for their review. So I throw that out there for discussion with council. I can certainly talk a little bit if you're... I can certainly talk a little bit if you're interested in the ad hoc committee that we had with the fire station, which I think worked fairly well and would propose something very similarly.
Any comments or questions from the council? Maybe I'll start. So look, I'll say since this was mentioned a week or a couple of weeks ago, I know that there's already starting to be a conversation in the community, which is good, I think, because they're paying attention at least. And then how this comes to be and how we have the discussion, both here in council and also through this committee, if formed, is important to get the information to the public because in the end, the public is the one that's going to be listening and voting whether to support or not support. I think that's one thing that we've done in the past with some proposals as well as the communication to the public of just, as we all know, it's not about supporting or not supporting, it's about the facts and information and what is this being presented. So, you know, an ad hoc committee to start to have that discussion and further involvement with the council, I think, is appropriate if the council's looking to move forward on the manager's recommendation here. John?
Your Honor, I'll add to the discussion. I certainly don't have a problem with the committee taking a look at the feasibility of both of these issues, but I do think that one of the issues, particularly the police station, is going to be, to me, is I want to, everything falls back on the public safety study. And I think we're going to see that in January. Public safety study is going to define in which direction we're going to go. I think it has some type of an impact possibly on the police station. But we also need to know, have to get our arms around, what are we talking about relative to the capital improvements program? What streets are going to be done? What parks are going to be done? Because I think people in the community are not going to support a millage request for capital improvements without actually knowing what the outcome is going to be. I mean, it's not like the bridge. When we did the bridge millage, they knew we were going to redo three bridges. We did the fire station. We were going to build a fire station. We can't ask the community to give us a CIP millage request because we're going to redo roads. They're going to ask what roads, okay? And so I do think we have some work in front of us.
I agree with that. I think that the roads themselves, we, at the last meeting, received that presentation, which had a long list of the projects that are upcoming for 2020. But then there was the other, I'll say spreadsheet that had a whole list of items. And I think that's probably one start point is while we have may not refined what they're going to be, here's the volume in which we have to address. And I think that's also where we come into the ratings that are done and how that is and explain why that is. But I think it's something we probably have to revisit as well in the year coming up because as we all know, we've had capital improvement projects. Something that's not on the list by the end of the year gets on the list because the funding is available and others that you would, they just deteriorate in some fashion. Not between now and, say, spring, things happen. So I think that's going to take, at least on that part, on the capital improvement side. On the, on the police station side, I mean, this conversation goes back years from before we, council settled on the need for the fire station. And I agree, the January 13th meeting, the workshop we're having is related to the public safety assessment. And once I think we get that, then I think we'll have a better understanding of where that might sit, which path or which avenue that would go in not only discussion, but I'll say the feasibility. Yes. Michelle?
What on the committee, does it prioritize what's more important than other items? How does that work?
No, I think in, the two elements are, and I'll break them up separately. The police station will be driven by, you know, what the outcome is with the public safety assessment and drive what that capital need will be. But there's also some information to understand, you know, the current arrangement that we have with the county and what those terms and conditions are and, you know, that we're going year by year. So there's a kind of a risk assessment, if you will, although we've got a good relationship with the county. The other part of it is, is putting together a detailed listing of projects. Now, Mr. Lewis has done part of that, but we also have a lot of other projects that we have not carried out from a cost standpoint, whether they're trail improvements. We put together something pretty quick with Russell Design for trying to make some improvements with grant funds along the riverfront, only not to really have enough match money to do it. Those are the type of things. And that's in fact where I think, you know, well, I know why I recommended that we would have retained OHM advisors to assist with some of the costing, plus the fact that they've worked with other communities and putting together all of the information that the residents would need regarding what projects are going to get done, where they would fit into the queue and that type of thing. So I think a lot of it is, we do have a lot of good information with, from, you know, with the asset management program that both water and sewer have went through. Patrick does the Paser evaluation. But we do have some gaps that we need to finish. We got some park projects that would require, I think, prioritization, you know, from the council as to what that priority would look like, you know, whether the next one is Carnes Park, Mill Race, whatever the sequence is that may be. So those type of things that would go along with that, so.
Thank you.
John?
Your Honor, just a, I guess, a comment to the manager. I've been, I've made comments over the years relative that we just kind of hand contracts out. And I know that we don't, but in the case of the capital improvements program, I guess I would advocate that we, instead of using OHM, and I know that you've used them before in the past, we've had Manik and Smith has been involved just about in all of our street improvement projects. So from an engineering point of view, they probably have the best understanding of what our costs are. Okay? And then their landscape architect is the one that just did our five-year rec plan. And I'm sure she can, Lucy's competent enough to put together cost estimates for trail segments. So even though sometimes I'm critical of using Anakin Smith on every engineering project, I think when we're doing a capital improvement project, because of their familiarity with the city, to me, they would be, to me, they'd be, would be a preferred firm because they already know and worked on a lot of our streets and what some of those expectations are. It's just, that's just my thought.
If I may, just, and again, part of having worked with OHM advisors in the past, and this is kind of taking it off the line from the conversation, but a lot of it is community packaging. Patrick does a wonderful job of doing the estimating with unit quantities and the pricing from bids. And so I think less reliance on, in the aspect of doing the street estimates, the water and the sewer, but maybe mostly trail and those type of things. And actually, the packaging to the community as to how that is presented, I think, is where some of their successful experience would, could benefit us, so.
Well, I guess to carry the conversation since this workshop, I guess I would like to, I'd like to see, I'd like to see an example of what they've done, one or two examples of what they've done.
Okay.
I'm just thinking that really this is a kind of a capital improvement program on steroids. I would like to see it in a little bit more detail.
Yes, it does need more detail.
Okay.
I think having comparisons are things for council to look at. Some may have more familiarity than others and some of those, not only experiences, but examples would be beneficial. I think it'd also be beneficial as it starts to flow through if we do have the committee that forms to kind of review, but also the council gets that review as well.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Brian.
Brian?
Yeah, I agree. With Councilman Michelangelo, we definitely need to get through the public safety assessment first to really see where we're going to be with that, to see if that makes sense to do a police station project. But I think also we have taken consideration what the liability is going to be to the taxpayers, too. So that'd be, in my opinion, first and foremost, to nail that down. This is what you're going to be liable for based on your current tax situation. Because that's what everybody's going to be interested in. That's what they're going to vote on.
That's a point. And I think that as a meeting or two ago, we had some conversation about long-term debt, where we were, what that, how that stands. I think that's probably a good component for review as well. Now, as we get to the start, end of the year, here's where we are. Here's what we've committed over a timeframe and where that capacity is to take something on, I think is beneficial. I think that's part of the discussion as well. John?
Your Honor, I know this is, if we're looking at July of 2020 as the deadline and get something to the state for review, if we're going to put it on the November ballot, I know that time's critical. Does it make sense, I'll throw this idea out, if we're going to have a committee that's going to look at this, does it make sense to invite opportunities from the residents? They have a few residents on the committee that could provide some resident feedback on what, from their perspective, what they think potential projects are? Not in terms of the engineering aspect, but this is really going to be something that's got to be supported by the community. I just wonder if it'd be advantageous to have some residents that have an interest in this to be part of the process. So when a final, we make, when there is a final recommendation, we've got some resident input that's part of it. I'm just throwing it out as an idea.
Yeah, and if I could follow up, I know Councilmember Felder has a question, but I'll follow up on that afterwards.
Andrew?
Are we talking about one committee for both items? Are we talking about separate ones for consideration and evaluation of each?
That's your decision. You can do them separately or together. There's probably merit to each, but that would be a council decision.
I certainly think that evaluating each by the merits that it brings to the table and providing them as separate items, both under the committees in which they would exist and to the public as separate millages would be the way to go.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would be separate. I think if they were both moving forward, and that's just thinking as you're answering your question there. And as, just as Andrew, just before I said that, I was thinking, this is going to be a lift and for a committee, and there may be a strong desire in one versus the other or knowledge or gaining the information more so in one than the other. I could see where that has merit of looking at two. Of course, that means twice the staff commitment and time and, but maybe there's some separate there as well, not necessarily always the same. So the council then is getting a couple, I'll get, I'll say looks. While it's independent, also it's collective because it's still got to fit to Brian's comments, what's the capacity as well and what is that? So to see that then collectively is bringing it back together would be good.
And if I may, Your Honor, just follow up on those points because they're perfectly, they're really good points related to this conversation is, let's use the example of, if there is a police station, what is our capacity? I would clearly expect and would happen as part of the dialogue, having our bond counsel and probably our financial advisor attend one of those sessions so city council will understand the marketability of the bonds. What's the best framework for it? And there's little nuances, whether limited tax obligation, unlimited tax obligation, how that affects the charter. Those are really, really important things for this committee to understand if you're going to go issue bonds, you know, the term of the bonds, how they're structured. And so that alone may be a session or two beyond just trying to figure out the programming aspect and the cost estimate, working with an architect related to that, so. But it also, you know, would affect, you know, if you were looking at independently the capital improvements millage, do you, if by chance there is a desire to go that route and put it on there, what flexibility can you build into it that would allow you to issue some debt, whether it's even short-term to get the benefit of mobilization of contractors and, you know, positive interest rates that currently exist? But you've got to build that structure in there. So that, those are important things that would, you know, have to be assessed, I think, by an ad hoc committee. The other part, and going to Councilmember Michael Angelo's comment about public input. You know, when I was at the city managers' conference in Nashville a couple of months ago now, you know, we are obviously getting more and more engaged with public, the public through social media and other means of communication. And one of the interesting comments that came in one of the sessions I attended was, yeah, we, you know, have social media and 75% of the respondents don't live in our city. Well, we do know who votes here in the city of Monroe. And the interesting comment that one of the presenters made is that, you know, 80, 90% of the people that are actually involved, they vote, they're not going to come to a council meeting. They may never show up. But if you ask them for 10 or 15 minutes a month for their time for input on things, they'll give it to you and gladly. And so I'm kind of looking at that sort of a dynamic as opposed to having a single, two, three members with that to include, because that, because we have to know, does this, are you going to buy this? Does this make sense to you based on the information you have?
I don't have a problem with that.
And so that's part of what I would think the ad hoc committee would look at is how do you engage our citizenry in formulating, you know, if we're going to go forward with this? And if there is deficiencies, how do we correct them before we just put it out there for a yea or nay?
Just see if there's any other comments. You know, of course, our communications director, who has been a participant in all the items that we put to the public and for input and different surveys, I think is going to be an asset, of course, to both of these discussions.
And if I may, Your Honor, I'm going to ask Mr. Cochran. I think with this year, we have programmed through the national...
Citizen survey.
Yeah, national citizen survey that we had conducted two years ago. We're back up for a follow-up that can go with that and leverage that resource as part of this effort.
I think that survey, I think, has kind of been said by a couple already that you really have to get the information out if you're going to ask them. Because if you're going to ask them if they don't have some foundation to respond to, you're just going to get a responsive thought versus a detail of knowledge and understanding. Yeah, that's, that goes back to the timeframe and the need of really putting something in order quickly.
Your Honor, I hate to say it, but what's going on around, at least in the state of Michigan, is local units of government and communities are starting to figure out that the state and the federal government aren't going to give you any help. That if you want to improve yourself, you've got to do it locally, unfortunately, but...
So that was the comment that was in a news article probably about a month ago. And of course, the chamber has their state of the communities, very brief time to say six minutes to say something, but as I concluded, it was, the term is new localism. And it's really, it's just recognizing that the revenues of the past are not going to be coming that they were in the past. We already recognize that in our discussions over the last couple of years. But how do you move forward and how do you be creative? And how do you put things together that you're going to have to be doing by yourself at times, but still reaching out and seeking the ways in which to be creative and find revenues? So, John, I agree that that's kind of where we're at. And I think it's where we've been and I don't see it changing here in the near future when these decisions that we're talking about and items that are important to our community to make, provide service and also to provide the accommodations for our community and infrastructure and is now is when we have to do it. And delaying is not going to be the opportunity in the future. At least we have to start with the discussion. Brian?
Yeah, I know that we've talked about having a potential of getting our own lobbyist, to an extent, at the state level. Have we gone anywhere with that? Or have we even had any further thought of that?
No, I think, if I may, Your Honor. No, we haven't pursued it any further. I think there's a couple of program areas at the state that where it may be beneficial and certainly, I think probably more so at the federal level with some grant, but we have not pursued that any further at this point.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I can tell you that our port director is very fluid when it comes to that. He goes out and he secures things. He goes out and finds out the information. He's very good at what he does. And I know that for a fact that not only does he go federally, he goes state. He goes anywhere he can, has to go to get the answers. And he does an excellent job with it. Is it somebody maybe within our, one of our departments now that could help us with that? Because it seems to be something that we really need help with more than anything else at this time point.
Well, you know, first I want to use, follow up with the auditors that we have aggressive capital improvements using, leveraging a lot of the grants that we have available to us. So we do, you know, utilize that pretty extensively. But I do think that there is an opportunity to, you know, use an outside consultant like the port does to assist in securing some of this funding. You know, again, part of the challenge that... You know, again, part of the challenge that we have is the workload that some of the department heads are currently involved with, certainly Mr. Cochran, who handles some of the legislative items is phenomenally busy. And Mr. Lewis is probably looking at close to potentially $10 million in projects next year. And so, you know, I do think that's probably be beneficial if we were to look at an outside consultant to assist us with that. And they can target much easier and stay on top of the follow up without in our case, sometimes we got a million things going on the same day. And that timeliness has to be part of that delivery. But we'll follow we'll follow back up that.
See if there's other questions on this or thoughts at this time. And I'm sure that things and thoughts may come forward. Please share those with Mr. Pasto. I think he's still looking for some type of.
Yeah, I'm going to if I may, I'll just I'll throw it out there and see what kind of red flags I get. I get the sense that we're looking at two ad hoc committees. And I could put together a structure, a resolution at the next meeting related to that to provide the background with that. The one, you know, it would be helpful if you would let me know who you think would be good for the the police station ad hoc committee. And then the other would be, you know, who would be interested and who you think would be good as far as the capital improvements village. You know, I know when we had the the fire station committee, it was council member Ico Angeli, Mayor Clark, and at the time, council member Gloria Rafco, sorry, I'm drawing a blank on it, myself, Mr. Sell, Communications Director Jody Egan, both chiefs, council and the clerk treasurer Lavoie and Patrick Lewis as our city engineer. We had 10 members involved, and that was a pretty good group to to manage the project. So I'll give that some thought because I thought it was the the size and the contributions all made were very, you know, worked good as a group and as a team in moving that project forward. So but I'll bring it back to the next meeting to have set up a couple of resolutions and we can fill in the blanks and try and get this. I am worried about the July deadline. There's a lot to do in a short time to get there if and I'd hate to have the momentum and waste it, you know, because the next election thereafter would be August or November of 2021. And I can't see spending money on a special election, to be honest with you. So. I'll move forward with it and give me your thoughts if there's anything that comes up in between. So thank you.
And follow up thoughts, please send on to Mr. Pasto. Anything further for the?
Yes, your honor, late this afternoon, Mr. Lewis and I had a discussion about some of the challenges that related to the infrastructure design with the lazy boy site. I think he had sent a couple of design considerations. So I'm going to ask Mr. Lewis to talk a little bit about some of the challenge with the entryway and particularly with the offset, if you will, from Holiday Avenue to the across Telegraph to the west. And so, Mr. Lewis?
Honorable Mayor Council Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering Public Services.
Yeah, well, that's good, Michelle. I appreciate you zooming that in. We have we're getting close to our 20% design review. We're actually going to have that meeting on Friday with the developers team and the design team, as well as city staff that's on the steering committee for this project. The first we've got a couple of a couple of meetings that involve outside regulatory agencies. One of those is Eagle related to the drain, work on the drain, which is a demolition. That's not what we're here to talk about tonight. The other one we have is scheduled for January 10th, and that was the earliest date we could get with the M dot signals people. Part of the reason I'm bringing this up tonight with a couple of different alternatives is that the Manikin Smith Group and I discussed this late last week relative to a couple of designs for the median. I know that was when we had our work session a few weeks back, special meeting to talk about their special work session to talk about the development agreement and such matters. There was a desire expressed for a more dramatic entrance than we had originally planned. That was just going to be your your basic collector street in there. So I had them draft up two different concept drawings that were were vetted and reviewed by their traffic operations people as well as their geometrics. You can see the turning path of the truck that obviously north is at the top of the the drawing here. I don't know if this.
No, it doesn't work for this.
Yeah, I won't be able to do this. Wasn't I going to get a monitor for this day a while ago?
Yes, we can talk about that later.
I guess I have myself to blame for that. What we have going from the northbound traffic into the driveway is we've got it designed for a semi truck. And in that case, we have to have semi access to it because we're not entirely sure what uses are going to be at the rear of the property. So that's one of the things that's influencing the median design as far as pushing that back a little ways. You'll see that's just behind the stop bar. So one of the options was the initial desire, which which appeared to be there for, if possible, getting a full median in there. The dilemma that we're running running into right now isn't so much that it won't physically fit. It's that there's concern that if and when we meet with the M dot signals people on January 10th, they may not like the left turn lane offset. And that's what we're facing on the opposite side with Holiday Boulevard, being that that's just simply like a 36 foot wide roadway with left turn lane and through and right. And so it's it's offset by about the width of the median. The concern right now is if they look at that from a geometric standpoint and say, you'll need to go to what we call traffic operations, split phase operation. And that is where like north and south would be one movement, then normally east, west would be another movement, the through movement. The concern is that we would have to go to a split phase where westbound traffic would have a green phase with left and through and right. And then eastbound traffic would have a green phase, which would add to the add to the side street approach timing, which would then degrade the intersection, probably in the level of service E or even possibly F, depending on which of the modeled conditions they use. Again, not knowing for sure what's going to go in the rear of the property and the peak hour characteristics of it. So the dilemma that we're dealing with right now is if we wait three weeks to get a final answer from M dot on that, that's going to set our infrastructure design back probably from mid February to the early part to middle of March. Is it the end of the world? No. But the challenge with that would be we don't know yet what the contracting landscape's going to be in the in the late winter, and by then it'll be too late to make adjustments. We also had their team look at another option, which would be B. And again, please keep in mind, these are concept level drawings. So there's a lot of detail here we could discuss that's not yet on here. So concept level B is a modified median, which would allow us allow for the left turn lanes to line up. And the the con, of course, is we don't have quite as dramatic an entrance, certainly close to Telegraph. Another one of the cons here is even though we would save on the signal timing, and we believe M dot would probably be would probably approve this option, we only have room to stack about two or maybe three, if they were very tight, cars in the left turn lane. And depending on, again, what level of retail we have, certainly on the weekends and holidays, you'd have some peaking characteristics, which would cause that left turn spillover to block the through lane. Obviously, we could accommodate some of these things by having a wider approach and, you know, have putting in a dedicated right turn lane so that maybe people could get around the left turners in the right lane and squeeze back. But it really doesn't hurt. It really doesn't help operations to have that type of operation. So we'd like to be able to store all of our expected queue. From a traffic operations standpoint, I like the first option better simply because it's got it's got queuing for all the turn lanes. From a geometrics point of view, we like B better. The other possibility that we've been toying with some other ways to make this more of a dramatic entrance, do something without necessarily having a full width median in there, because I know that was a desire that we had. Maybe we could go with median light, maybe like a six foot median that has some more pronounced planters in there, decorative lights that could give more of an entry feature, and then utilize the the north and south sides of the of the road, particularly at the entrance for some signs, more dense landscaping rather than a median. I've given you kind of a lot of options. I know I'm it's not really a point A to point B presentation here, but these are the challenges we're coming up with. And unfortunately, this won't be the last time we probably have some of these things we need a massage. But I we do need to get this entrance locked in a little bit more so that they can continue on schedule with all the infrastructure design that's going to follow. So I guess I'll leave it there and see if we have any questions. Mr. Pasto, did I forget anything?
No, I think that's it. You know, our preference would be the first alternative, but, you know, that may come with some some pushback from M dot.
And some potential delays.
Yeah.
I'll start with John, and I'll come this way because I have a comment, too.
Thank you, your honor. I guess the first question I have is we have a what about a 20 acre site? 26. So the first question I would have is why are we accommodating semi trucks in the main entry? Why don't we have a separate service drive for semi trucks so they don't have to use the main entry into the development when you're talking with a 26 acre site? That's the first question. Second question I have is that type of median right there, I hate to say this, about a year after that's built, it's going to look like hell. Because that little tiny skinny point is going to be nothing but concrete or some other type of material. And that is not going to look that's not going to be a significant entry. So if we can't go with A, the first option, then my recommendation is you get rid of the median and you make the sides terraces bigger and you make your statement there. Now, the third question I have is was this designed by a landscape architect or by an engineer?
Oh, the first, okay. Which which question would you like me to start with?
Who is it designed? What professional designed this?
I'd rather start with the easy question first, but this this was a preliminary concept layout from the geometrics people and traffic operations.
So this is laid out by a traffic engineer. So the the first comment I have, and I don't want to be negative about this, but we're taking a 26 acre development, and the character of it is being established by a geometrics engineer. I have to tell you, okay. No, you had your hand up. You might gonna?
No, I just I also just just to give it some perspective is that we actually have had the conversation with Mark Russell, with Russell Design, that you're going to be engaged in in some of this this layout as well. So this is very preliminary. We're not even to the 20% yet.
Okay. I think the point is that there's there's a configuration challenge, and this is the first just to show it because I think there's some ways it could be better myself.
I answered your third question.
Okay, so then now the first question is, why can't we have a separate service drive for semis without having them access the main entry?
Well, the the short answer is we could there right now, the way we have the as it stands. And again, please keep in mind, some of this is fluid. If we knew exactly where everything was going to fit together on this, I could answer that question absolutely. We could figure out a way to get it done. But how much of this is leaving our options open for future development? We don't want in the very first phase to totally box out potential uses. That's that's been the challenge with starting where we started. Right now, what we have for the southwest corner of the site is you'll see a parking lot layout there. And there's a user, which I think we that's I can't tell you what specifically what the user is going to be. But the intention is that building will be as close to the lot, the south lot line as possible and as close to the west lot line as possible to try to, you know, put that corner definition on there, similar to what we what we looked at at the work session. That's going to leave us with a 20 foot space between the southerly lot line of the parcel and the building. And that's already being reviewed right now for adequacy by the fire department. They have some things they want to see there. But the challenge with that geometrically is if you see this semi truck, that truck can't make that turn and swing wide between the property line and the building, and we can't encroach upon the adjacent property to the south. Right now, that's the only service drive we've got planned. The the three entrances we know we're going to have, regardless of the use, are Holiday, Huber Drive going out north to Stewart Road, and then the service drive. The rest of them will have at least one more access point, probably two, but we're not sure where it's going to be, what form it's going to be, and what uses are going to occupy that site. So yes, we probably could, but can I assure you that this might not be necessary based on who wants to come in on what part of the site? I can't because we don't know who that's all going to be, and we it's constantly in motion. So if you tell me that it's important that we accommodate semi somewhere else, we'll figure out a way. But understand that might potentially limit the users that could go into that site. That's the concern.
If I may just, you know, we obviously and we've had the discussion about using the southwest entrance there, you know, as the the semi, and it may require that we move, you know, another 10 or 15 feet to the north to give it to the turn radius that you have. And as Mr. Lewis alluded to, you know, maybe the the property to the south, which is so, you know, is for sale, you know, we may use be able to get that if the if it's acquired by the developer, which seems to be their effort right now. So it does make sense, I think, to to look at that as the south entrance for any semi traffic in it. But it may, you know, as he alluded to, it may pinch a little bit to some of the other development opportunities. But, you know, it's a trade off between keeping the semis off the main road coming into it and the functionality with the rest of the site and some of the developable area.
But I agree. I don't like the idea of semis coming to the main drive either. And Huber Drive is probably a more appropriate place, but that won't be constructed on the first phase. So we're we're challenged of how to get that access on the early phases, too. So it's something to consider.
Yeah, I thought of Huber Drive, too, because it's already facilitated for semis, given the industries that exist on the eastern side of that that road and its concrete. But my goodness, if you're going to that site and you have to go all the way down to either come back from Stewart or go all the way down to to Elm and back around, it's it'll be a pain in the butt getting into that site. I'm not entirely opposed. It doesn't seem too much of a grand entrance when it's flanked by a parking lot, at least on one side. Could we bump that back to the next intersection, the next intersection east somehow and have either a floating arch over that intersection or do it on the back end? And would that give you more room? Because it seems like the median there is the thing that's killing us.
I I think that is a concern. I think that and that's we had we had looked at that as where do you want that? I think in some of the other developments that we looked at in that work session, that grant more grand entrance, the town square look was actually one block deep. I understand we're we're trying to make a statement here. We want to be able to have the user say, right from Telegraph, this is something different. This is something unique and set the pattern for the corridor plan. I don't relish coming here saying, well, we got these design challenges, so we're going to throw some of these things away. I don't like to do that, but we also wanted to engage the council in these types of discussions because we know how important it was for for you to have direct input into the design here.
So if we have a more utility based intersection on Telegraph and back set the grand entrance that all the traffic is going to have to turn right, left, or straight on anyway, all the cars are going through there one way or another that are coming into the site, and maybe it doesn't have as much visibility from Telegraph, but I'm sort of okay with that. I don't know how the rest of council feels.
Michelle, go ahead. No, then I'll speak.
If this is our only option and semis are going to have to go into this entryway in our first phase, then I'm going to say I I think we should kill the median because the semis alone are going to crush our medians and make them look terrible. So I I'm for making the design more impactful on the sites if we have no other option.
And we'll we'll look at other options. I mean, as I mentioned, we have our 20% design review meeting Friday, and we definitely want to be able to give the engineers the direction as far as the layout of the rest of the site because we're going into the holiday weeks. A lot of people are off. I'm here, but they got people scattering. We don't want to we don't want to lose two, three weeks where we're fumbling around without it without a layout. So we can we can take those comments back, the concern about could we come up with another entrance drive, see if there's flexibility on the southerly wall of that building that's close to the service drive that we're that we're squeezing that out of there and and try to incorporate that to at least get the semis off the main entrance. Now, that still may have challenges with the median just from a traffic operations standpoint of trying to make sure we get it through M dot. But.
I know you don't have the answer to this question. I know John's got a question as well.
One I didn't answer either, too, I think.
Back to it. So, you know, we're talking about semis, and we don't know what the use is. We don't know what the potential is. So we don't know the size of what the semi is going to be. So we could eventually making decisions is something that's not necessary also.
Right.
So that's my first comment. And I think back to some of the renderings that we observed at one of the previous meetings. I think there was some setback to the median. What that distance is, I think, is goes back to your statement is, I think, and what council's been is we do want to make a statement because that's why we're doing a corridor improvement authority and keep moving that forward, and we have support to the businesses, which gets me to my last point, which is across the street. It seems to be we're trying to model something to fit somebody else, what they have or are not willing to do. We need to have that conversation with Frenchtown. They have their their entrance across the way is probably just a traditional entrance, but they don't know what they might be in the future either. And I know that there's been some willingness to have some conversations. Others have been a little more challenging. I recognize that, too. But if we don't have the conversation with them, then we're just going to do it by what they have across the road because the configuration doesn't line up.
The very good point, and I would have I'm not this may strike you as odd. I'm not 100% sure that Holiday Drive, I think it's a road commission road. It is in Frenchtown township, but I think it's I think it's under the jurisdiction of the road commission, but I'd have to verify that.
So that maybe it's not Frenchtown, maybe it is road commission. I think we need to have that discussion at some point and sooner than later. I think we need to have that discussion at some point, and sooner than later. And if Frenchtown, you know, that, that gets back to some other conversations we've had about, you know, that members of the administration, as well as the BDC has presented to Monroe Township regarding the corridor improvement authority. We're yet to get on the agenda for the Frenchtown, and I think we need to push that to go make the presentation, to have the conversation of why this is important. And I would use this as an example of why their partnership and willingness to develop a corridor improvement authority is equally important, should be equally important to them for future development, or it'll just be the same. And, and I don't think being the same, what's on the other side of Telegraph Road is, is adequate for me, but, John, you had a question?
Yeah, I guess the other question I have, I don't know how far you guys are at in the design, but that parking lot, to me, looks like it's awful close to Telegraph Road and it's not setback like we had talked about.
Actually, the solid black line, or where the aerial photo ends is actually the existing right-of-way line now. So the sidewalk is in property that's not currently in the road right-of-way. If you look real closely, you can see it says existing right-of-way, there's a leader line very close to the top of the area.
Yeah, I see that, but what I'm getting at is the terrace isn't sufficiently wide enough to have a really good landscaping entry as part of the.
Between the sidewalk and the parking lot, or?
We'll tell you, late this afternoon, we had that discussion, you know. Oh, yeah.
And the other, and I don't, I don't need to know who the building, the proposed building is over on that parking lot, but why isn't the building kind of flipped, so the building is part of the main entry and then the parking is on the other side of it? Why, when you drive in, are people going to drive by a large parking lot to get in?
There's still some site details that need to be resolved, obviously, but, but I think that, you know, going back to the first part, you know, that was the comment, was moving back a little area for a much larger terrace, based on what we talked about. And some of the site plan, obviously, is still in the works. I think preliminary, that's probably what the preference would be, but, you know, we could work with them a little bit further as well.
And that was roughly the layout of the number of parking spaces that were desired and the location of the building, which, again, is not in frame because of, we haven't zoomed in on, but.
Don't decide the fact, we're still at 20% design.
Right.
Got a long way to go.
Which is why we want, we want to take advantage of this opportunity tonight to get some of this input, so we know what to take back to them. And we have our steering committee internal tomorrow.
Your honor, and I do appreciate that, but I also understand that once we get into 75% design, then the, then the combat comes back. We're too far into it to go back and redesign.
That's why we're here. Did you have a second question? You gave me three and I can't remember what you.
I'll let Kelly go.
Okay, I forgot what it was.
Well, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say, I'm thinking in terms of being a consumer, a shopper, I don't want to deal with semi trucks if I'm trying to go into the area. That's what I don't like about Dixie. So some places I would go, I don't go because I know I got to deal with the trucks. I know we talked a while ago even about making some changes there. So if there's anything we can do to redirect the semi traffic, I'm all for that. And, you know, I'm not the design person, you have to break it down to me in little pieces, but just as a driver and a shopper, I, you know, I don't want to deal with semi trucks getting in my way when I'm trying to go enjoy the area. So if there's something we can do, I would be for it.
That's one thing we're definitely going to take back to the design team, is figure out how the overall site's going to work with a service entry. To answer the mayor's question, I believe they used a standard 53-foot semi as their design.
Oh, yeah, looks like it.
I don't think, I don't know if you ever asked that specifically, but.
I know what 53-foot semis are.
Say, you probably could tell that just from looking at it.
Just by looking at the radius of it. Paul?
I just have a question, or a statement, I guess. What is going to happen to the concrete with semis using it?
Well, be designed, if it's, if it is to be a semi entrance, it'll be designed to handle that. So.
Hopefully not.
Thing for 30 years.
What they said over on Detroit Avenue.
Your honor.
Just thinking out loud.
I think with a 26-acre development, even if half of it's developed, my concern is that we're not only talking semis, if you have restaurants, you're talking beverage vehicles, and you're talking about waste vehicles. So why would we want to put semi trucks, beverage trucks, garbage trucks, all going through the main entrance of a new development when we have sufficient room to have a, a service entry? I mean, that's what, that's what the, the planning should be looking at.
Well, we can create, right now, the way that this site is laid out, this user, we don't have room at the south end. So the challenge is going to be what is our provision for that? I think it's pretty clear, we're going to take that back to the design team and say, we need to solve this issue one way or another, whether it's moving the use, adjusting this, putting in a secondary entrance, even if it's phased. I mean, it may have to be a situation where if, if the service entrance is going to be Huber Drive, because there's that issue too, is which section of Huber, going north to Stewart, coming south through town? Because if we end up with a large commercial user at the back of this property, we may not connect Huber Drive, depending on, because the next question's going to be from the residents that live on Huber, why do I have to take the semi traffic coming in from the south? North is not as big of a problem with that, but that, that will be the challenge, is we may have to, we may have to stage this and the semis come in here for this phase, and then, once we get phases two and three built out, we need to change that location. But understand that there might be incremental costs associated with, with that too, because if we've got to build out multiple entrances, staging those in time to accommodate the eventual development of this, it may not be the same entrance from start to finish.
Well, but I think there should be some basic design parameters.
Yeah, there is, and I think that's part of, you know, the mass, you know, a general master plan, if you will, for this site and how it gets developed.
I think the first one, from a policy point of view, is, from my perspective, if we have a, pretty much a clean slate to work with, then one of the policies should be that we don't want semi trucks using the south Huber Drive entry. Why would I want to commit, I know part of Huber Drive is industrial and warehousing, well, why would I want to increase the amount of semi truck traffic for the residential area?
That's the challenge with having it be Huber. So we've got to fit another service entrance off of Telegraph somewhere, so.
Another curb cut.
And just understand, that's going to impact the amount of developable property. And I'm not, I'm impartial on how that all shakes out, but that's, those are all things that eat away at the developable property we've got here.
If I may, I know we got to kind of wrap this up here. There's three things, takeaways. One is, you know, we will, we'll look at the entrance there with Holiday and, and work with MDOT related to, you know, what we can accomplish so that we don't have this split-phase signal that, that may affect the level of service. If not, we probably will beef up the corners of that intersection from a, an aesthetic standpoint. The other part is, obviously, we're going to, you know, the terrace area is going to be much deeper than what it's depicted on this drawing. And then on the south end, we'll look at that being more of a, a service entrance for, you know, semis potentially, or other heavy vehicles that'll need to, to enter into the site. So those are the things that I think, based on tonight's discussion, that we'll follow back up on as we go forward, so.
And Michelle, I think you had a comment, so we'll take one more and then we'll move on.
Coming from a retail background, when retailers are going into this development, the terrace, the front terrace, whatever retailer would be right in front there, will probably want a lot of visibility from Telegraph Road. So you'll have to keep that in mind, too.
Don't block them in totally.
Don't block them in, because they won't come.
Right, landscape screening, yeah. Well, we're not, I, we're probably not as worried about screening the building part, we're more worried about screening the parking lot area anyway, to have it not look quite so ugly. So I, I agree with that.
Well, thank you, Patrick and Mr. Pastu for the review of this. It's helpful. Better to hear early than later, and I appreciate it much. See where we go next.
All right, thanks a lot. Appreciate everyone's comments.
Unless there's any final comments from council for the administration, see you none. We'll close the work session, and we have about 15 minutes prior to the start of the city council meeting. Thank you.
Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Mike Angeli.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Here.
Lemoore.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. I'd ask that they all please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of the residents of our community.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item would be any amendments to the agenda.
Looking to administration or councils, if there's any amendments. Seeing none, next item, please.
Next item are citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Okay, at this time, we take comments from those present here this evening for items not related to an agenda item. And there's also the opportunity at the close of the meeting to take comments as well. Any comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? I see Ken's raising his hand. Sure, you may ask a question.
Is the Oprah for 101 first?
Yes. Yes, it is. So we'll have, that's under a council action item. And I know there'll be some discussion, and obviously you're here, you'll have an opportunity to make some conversation. Okay? Thank you. Other comments from those present, council not related. Seeing none, clerk, next item, please.
The next item is a proclamation.
Thank you. I think I'll review this. It's not a presentation here this evening. I just want to give some background. I know the council has in a conversation with the First Presbyterian Church. And of course, they're celebrating their 200th anniversary coming up in January on the 13th. But there'll be a formal presentation on the 12th at the church prior to services, which I will attend, and if council members hopefully can attend as well. But the, just to give an indication for those here and those watching, it's, the First Presbyterian is one of the oldest churches in Monroe, of course, being 200 years, and one of the very few bicentennial churches in Michigan. So it's also sits within the historical village plot as well. But, so they, they're going to have a special recognition come January 12th. And we'll be presenting this proclamation in the recognition of their service in their community, but also the services they've held over the 200 years. So I just want to bring that to the attention of those here, those watching. So hopefully you can share in your, in the celebration with the First Presbyterian Church. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is a public hearing. Public hearing to receive and review comments to consider the addition of property 69-015551-000 in the proposed Telegraph Road Corridor development area.
Thank you. And as the public hearing states, we did set this public hearing for this evening. And that's what we'll conduct. I'll see if, I don't know if there's other comments, Mr. Pastu regarding this.
Before. Please, Your Honor, that this is amending, adding the 8.25 acres to the Lazy Boy site that was not originally included in the previous public hearing for the corridor improvement authority.
Okay. With that, at this time, I think we'll move forward and open the public hearing. Public hearing for the additional, additional proposed Telegraph Road Corridor development area, as mentioned by the administration, the additional property that was added, that was obtained through the Frenchtown Township discussion and agreement. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding the public hearing for item 2599? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and see if there's any comments from council or action. Okay. No comments from the public hearing? Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action, item 2623, establish public hearing date for Brownfield Plan for 1284 North Telegraph Road.
Two.
Your Honor, I'm just going to have Mr. Cochran give a very brief introduction to this item.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mark Cochran, Assistant to the City Manager and Economic Development Coordinator. This is the Brownfield Plan being presented for the former Lazy Boy site. Just, I know we went over this in a work session a couple of weeks ago. But since that time, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority did approve and recommend its approval to City Council for the Brownfield Plan. So the first step is to schedule a public hearing and then have adoption at the January 6 meeting.
Thank you.
We'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for Monday, January 6, 2020, regarding the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan for the former Lazy Boy property.
Motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on item 2623, establishing the public hearing date as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mike Angeli.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 2626, zoning ordinance 19-007.
Pastu, I see Mr. Green's at the podium.
Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Pastu, Jeffrey Green, Director of Community Development. Tonight, what we are looking for is a, or sending is a recommendation from the Citizens Planning Commission regarding the rezoning of what is 12, was the former Lazy Boy site, 1284 North Telegraph Road, and basically composed of three parcels in that area. In November of this year, as you are well aware, the former Lazy Boy property at 1284 North Telegraph was conveyed to the city of Monroe. Earlier in the year, however, anticipating that there might be future development on the site, the city took the initiative of contracting with MKSK Studios to prepare a sub-area plan for that site. The sub-area plan was completed in June of this year. And MKSK worked with Land Use USA and Manikin Smith to prepare marketing and engineering studies and analysis of that site, respectively. The plan proposed a mixed-use development, which would offer both commercial and retail, as well as office and residential uses on the site, which again is composed of those three parcels which were conveyed to the city. The plan was consistent with the findings of an earlier planning charrette, which looked at this site several years ago, and it was looking at potential future redevelopment. Of the three parcels, one was located in Frenchtown Township, and that has been transferred to the city through a 425 agreement. With the conveyance and transfer of property complete, the city of Monroe submitted the request to the Citizens Planning Commission to rezone this parcel from its current zoning classifications, which are C2 general commercial and R1 single-family residential, to PUD, which is planned unit development. Reason the planned unit development zoning was being pursued was that it permits the type of flexibility needed to accommodate a mix of land uses on the site. The proposed mixed use is also consistent with the future land use map found in the city's master plan, which identifies the site as community mixed-use center. On December 9, the CPC heard the rezoning request and conducted a public hearing. Following discussion and public hearing, they recommended rezoning the site to PUD planned unit development and asked that their communication be referred to the city council. Tonight is the first reading of the proposed ordinance 19-007. It's also recommended that Monday, January 6, 2020, be established as the date for the second reading and the ordinance and the date of the public hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from council? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you. Councilmember.
To conduct the first reading of ordinance 19-007 and establish Monday, January 6, 2020 as the public hearing date for the proposed rezoning and final reading of ordinance 19-007.
Support. It's a motion by Councilmember Lemoore, supported by Councilman Michelangelo, item 2626, zoning ordinance 19-007, and the first reading, as well as setting the dates of the public hearing as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Mike Angeli.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item is 2627.
Do we need the first reading, or is that Mr. Buds?
That the motion was to conduct the first reading, correct? Yes.
But, Your Honor, so it's going to take a minute.
Take a second. I don't, Mr. Buds will look at his as well. We have, we have time. Mr. Buds has an item, so you can review and see if that works.
Perfect. Thank you. Ordinance 19-007, an ordinance to amend Part 2, Chapter 720, zoning, Section 720-23, zoning map of the code of the city of Monroe, Michigan, to rezone the property located at 1284 North Telegraph Road.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a comment, and the next item I know was mentioned. So I appreciate the staff's presentation on this, because as people that are here and people that are watching or may catch it on impact, the idea, the opportunity, why the first reading is here, but also the public hearing coming up, to stay in context of the details are appreciated. Of course, it'll be found on the website as well. So that's my, just a comment there. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 2627. It's regarding the obsolete property rehabilitation and the property at 101 West First Street.
Very good. I'll see, Mr. Pastu, if there's any opening comments, and then we'll see the council and I think the developers here as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've discussed this the last few meetings. And following our meeting on December 2, reached out to the applicant to discuss some of the items that were discussed at that December 2 meeting. Summarizing it, the window installation and resolving the issue with the historic district commission. In my correspondence, you see that the applicant felt that there was just a couple of items to finalize, didn't think that would be difficult regarding the permit for it. Mr. Green, the Community Development Director, was looking to arrange, and I know he's, to meet with a subcommittee or to chairperson with the HDC to secure a recommendation related to that. Provided the applicant a copy of the development agreement that you had approved at the last meeting. And then the agreement was to, you know, submit a revised Oprah application, didn't include the windows. And then included in there is that to submit revised plans, which are part of the development agreement. There is a concern about the second story and its use and whether it needs to be sprinkled or not. And then there was an item related to the exterior staircase, whether it needed structural engineering review or not. The project itself is significant, and city administration certainly supports the application and encourages approval of a resolution approving that. The council will set what the number of years that would be. The original recommendation was six years. The applicant supplied it, provided some supplemental information that, based on the matrix established, would have moved it out to, I believe, 12 years. The project, though, set idle, and it's a great opportunity for its redevelopment. Any approval tonight, we would recommend that it be conditioned upon resolving the permit with the windows, and that's required in the development agreement, as well as securing, you know, a recommendation, or having the HDC provide a recommendation and then going forward from there. So with that, I think it gives a little background from where we are at the last meeting.
And then I'll see if there's comments from council. I know, as I said, Mr. Wickenheiser's here. But you had an opportunity to meet and discuss this, correct? And then we're waiting some additional. So if I hear what you're saying correctly, this is all the information, and you're looking for council for action. And I think there's alternatives which are on the back here that were listed. But the administration, as you said, supports the application, encourages approval. But obviously, there's things that would have to be contingent on you making the final, not the resolution, but the agreement with the development agreement, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
I'll see if there's any comments from council first, and then go from there. Or Councilman Michelangelo?
Yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Pastu, you went through a list of things that you've talked to the applicant about. Are we in receipt of anything? I mean, do we have a signed development agreement? Do we have drawings?
We do not have, you know, any of the items in here finalized at this point in time, but.
You know, like I had mentioned two weeks ago, I appreciate the investment that Mr. Wickenheiser's made in the downtown. However, but when we're talking about an Oprah, which is the, we're foregoing tax dollars. I think it's, we should have things in front of us, like a signed development agreement. The plans have been submitted, a recommendation from the HDC. We shouldn't be doing it in reverse, where we go ahead and approve the Oprah subject to getting all of this information. I, I think there's a procedural thing that, you know, if you're.
I think there's a procedural thing that, you know, if you're looking for a tax abatement, provide the information so everybody can make the appropriate decisions, and then when it gets to council, all the i's have been dotted and the t's have been crossed.
I think in, you know, this circumstance, you know, given the mitigating circumstances that we had talked about, the delays that, you know, certainly on my end of it, yeah, it's not as smooth as it is. I think going forward, we give a pretty well-defined process that we will use for any consideration of any future Oprah applications that would come before us.
Well, your honor, may I continue the question? How much time are we talking about to get everything resolved and signed? Revised application, development agreement, and everything that you mentioned? How many weeks are we talking about? One, two?
It could happen fairly quickly. I mean, again, it's, applicant would follow up on a few of these things, and it could happen fairly quickly, so.
I think obviously there's some questions, and I know Mr. Wickenheiser, you're here, so maybe if you wanted to, I think you're here to maybe make some comments or present some, or provide some information, would be wonderful. Just name an address, please. Thanks, Ken.
Ken Wickenheiser. We'll use 101 West First Street. We've got a few, so. The city manager sort of outlined that we've been in communication on this. He said that pretty well, and I appreciate him taking the initiative to reach out to me, because admittedly, he did. He came to me, and again, I appreciate it. Everything is on track, and if I was smart, I would sit quietly and let it be on track. Part of the problem is, since our meeting, I had a chance to watch, two weeks ago, city council meeting, and there was a lot of things said by me, said about me, that I just can't let rest. I've been at this 25 years. I've changed my career and dedicated my working life to improving the downtown. So specifically, what, some of the things that were said. Councilman Michael Angeli said, "Wickenheiser pushes the envelope and forces the city into a position where we appear to be a barrier to redevelopment. We are not." He said, "This is a classic example of not, of Wickenheiser not following any regular requirements an applicant should, starting work before obtaining a certificate, then coming to the city after the fact asking for approval." And lastly, he asked the question, "I want to know if there are other downtown property owners that start their projects without getting applicable permits, who then have problems operating with the city?" I'd like to kind of address these one by one. And again, I'm going to try and make this as quick as I can. I applied for the Oprah in April of this year. Followed up in May in writing. I followed up in June verbally. I followed up again in September in writing. I was told we're working on it. The first time it was heard in front of council was November 18, which is seven months after Councilman Michael Angeli went into detail about Act 146 of 2000, stating about me beginning work prior to the approval. Somehow, we missed a section, which is 125.2785, Section 5, which I'm going to quote, that says, "The legislative body, not more than 60 days after the receipt of the application, shall by resolution either approve or disapprove of the application." Again, I applied in April. The first time it was brought up here was in November. When Councilman Lamoore made a statement about it taking, seeming to take a fairly long time, which I don't think he realized it was seven months, Councilman Michael Angeli said, quote, "The reason why we said hold on this application is because we were in mediation with Wickenheiser on another project." I don't think I need to explain what happened. It was said very clearly. An incentive on this project, which I think everyone agrees is good for downtown, was put on hold purposely, while I sued the city on a totally unrelated project, and it was held as leverage against me. I don't see how that's anything short of blackmail, to hold up something here unrelated to this until we get the resolution we want here. I don't think anyone can say that that's proper or legal. Regarding working without a permit, I applied for a building permit for the entire project, also in April of this year, so we're eight months ago. That included the windows, included an apartment on the second floor, and some miscellaneous little stuff, some restrooms inside, replacing the restrooms, that kind of thing, so we can place the building back in service. The prints are sent out to a third-party reviewer that has no ties to the city of Monroe, no history in the city of Monroe. She came back with the designation that the second-floor conversion to an apartment is a change in use. Okay. I don't expect you to be experts in the code, but that designation of change in use automatically triggers a sprinkler system. Okay. I'm not going to argue on that, that's fine. So we abandoned the second-floor apartment. We're trying to get the drawings revised to reflect abandoning that whole idea. In the meantime, because I can't get, the architect is busy, so in the meantime, while winter is approaching, since I applied for the whole building permit in April, winter is coming. So I applied for another permit on October 14. And this time, I stripped all of the other stuff out, and it was strictly for the windows to close the building in before cold weather set in. All I wanted to do was put the windows in so that we can seal the building up before it's too cold to do it. Then it came back, well, to replace the windows, we require the historic district commission to weigh in. Okay? We can do that. So, put together a package. It included the energy efficiency of the windows. It included the original sizes of the windows, which you really couldn't tell, because they were either broken or boarded up for decades. So I included the original size of the windows, and stating, "We are going to replace all the windows with the original size that was in the building." I included the marketing sheets from the manufacturer. It showed the cross-section of the windows. It showed pictures of the windows installed in homes and buildings. And then lastly, again, because you couldn't tell what the original were, because it had been boarded up for so long, I included a CAD drawing showing, double-hung windows are going here where it's historically correct, single-pane windows are going here where it's historically correct, to show exactly what the building would look like with the windows reinstalled. It was stated, "I didn't go to the meeting." That is absolutely 100% true. My evenings are for my kids. And it was also stated that the windows were installed. That's also absolutely true. I waited five weeks from when I applied, just to put the windows in, for the historic district commission to take it up. A warm day came, winter was coming, we put the windows in. I'm not going to allow the building to sit there longer and deteriorate more. I'm just not going to do it. So the next day after the meeting, I reached out and I asked, "How did the meeting go? Did it get approved?" The response was, "The committee found a picture from the 1800s that had a tower built between the building and Cass Street." Now, this again, please keep in mind that all I applied for was to replace the windows, nothing else relative to the rest of the project. Again, there was a tower built between the building and Cass Street in the 1800s. They weren't going to request that I rebuild that tower, but they are curious about a porch design. I have no idea what they're talking about, a porch design. I've never asked for a new porch. I've never applied for a new porch. I've never had a new porch on a drawing of any kind at all. They asked about the location of an ADA ramp, which again, did show on the drawing for the original rest of the project. It wasn't part of this permit application. They asked for the energy efficiency, which had already been provided to them as part of the package. They asked for the appearance of the store front windows, which was done on the CAD And finally, they said they weren't sure, they were happy with my choice of vinyl windows. So they tabled it. Again, the manager has already arranged to try and answer their questions. I'm happy to do that, but again, I'm absolutely guilty. I put the windows in to keep the weather out. I don't know what else to say. The last question brought up by Councilman Michael Angeli, "I want to know if there are other downtown property owners that start their projects without getting applicable permits and have problems with the city?" He said, he went on to say, "This is a perfect example of my wrongdoing." I do agree it's a perfect example, but for much different reasons. I think it's a perfect example of city government unreasonably and unlawfully delaying the project by holding this incentive as ransom against a lawsuit that I brought to the city on another project. I think it's an example of an inefficient plan review process, where we send our plans out to a third-party reviewer with no ties to the city. I think it's an absolutely perfect example of inconsistent and unpredictable determinations of the code. Specifically, this change in use issue is a big deal. I'm happy to abandon the apartment on this. I just want everyone to understand the ramifications of this. For decades, through multiple building officials, through multiple mayors, through multiple city managers, we've redone buildings down here without invoking this change of use. This is recent, within the last 18 months to two years, excuse me, two years. So for example, Jones for Men Building, where Todd Jones is, the upper floors of that were the Klein's Department Store. We converted those to apartments. There was no change in use. The KB Building, on the corner of Monroe and Front Street, the third floor was converted to apartments. It was not a change in use. 13 through 15 Washington Street, the former Millikins Jewelers Building, it was the original city hall. The last time that third floor had been used was the 1950s as the Monroe County Abstract Office. We converted that to apartments. No change in use. The most perfect example, and I don't want to touch a nerve, but the United Furniture Building. The third floor was deemed no change in use, and it was converted to an apartment. Two-thirds of the way through the project, after the third floor was done, the exact same thing happening on the second floor, it was determined a change in use. We couldn't even get through one project without the determination changing. Different floors are determined in different ways. And so, again, I want you guys to understand that this recent policy of change in use with no historical data and just a random determination by someone from out of town will bring conversion of upper floors to apartments, which is consistent with the recommendations of the consultant that we hired for the last master plan that we just adopted. It will bring these apartments to an absolute halt. I guarantee it 100%. Nobody will put a sprinkler in these buildings for apartments. The return is not there. And it's a change in precedent over decades, and I don't understand it. I won't argue it, but I just want you guys to understand the ramifications of what's happening. So to wrap up, I know I've gone on too long. We've got surrounding towns with similar demographics to Monroe. Tecumseh, Adrian, Wyandotte, they all have healthy revivals. Monroe has advantages over those. We have the river. We have proximity to the lake. We have I-75 running close. We have major population centers in Toledo and Detroit nearby. We have multiple international corporations here, and still, our downtown is stagnant and behind those that don't have those advantages. And again, Councilman Michael Angeli stated that I'm part of the problem, and I caused these problems. And is there anyone else? I would encourage any of you to call Ken Callender. I'd encourage you to call Dustin Leach. I'd encourage you to call Jake Leroy. I'd encourage you to call Doug Chafin. Every one of them has done a project in downtown Monroe. Every one of them is a leader in their respective businesses, and every one of them will tell you they will not, under any circumstances, do another project in downtown Monroe. They simply won't, and they will tell you that.
You can't speak for other people, so I'm not going to listen to that list.
Okay.
So I do have a couple of questions to start with.
Okay.
So tonight's meeting is here about the Oprah that's before us. I gave you the time to do the review, because I think it's similar what the conversation was at the last meeting.
Yep.
So this evening is before the council regarding your submission of the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act. So I'm not going to go through all the details in the process, because it was submitted, and there was an amount put. There was also changes.
Yeah.
So my first question is, has there been a rendering or a drawing submitted to the building department regarding the work that you're proposed to do or are doing?
With the elimination of the apartment, no.
Okay. So that's one thing that's in the list here, and I appreciate the fact that you did meet with the city manager to at least come to some discussion about that, because that's why we're here tonight.
Yep.
The second is that the, that the permit regarding the windows and other things, I think, is in here. Let me guess. So the window installation and the review, is that on track to be finalized?
No.
Well, it says, there's three, there's some items here on the fact sheet, which is on the agenda. It says, "Provide the building information with the information for, to finalize permit." It sounds like it can be easily accomplished, is what it said. Is that on track to be finished?
Yeah. As far as I know, I've submitted everything. If they have more questions, we've, Jeff reached out to me last week about a meeting, and I wasn't, I just didn't see his email. So yes, I'm happy to answer any questions they have, but I think everything has been addressed already.
Then there's, there's an item here that regarding the application, it falls to the building department, which is, the council has, and the development agreement, which has been submitted to the council. Now, I'm assuming that you received the development agreement?
I did. I'm confused by it a bit.
So you're not prepared to sign the agreement?
I am. The answer is yes. I guess my question is, is this agreement specifically made for me? Because I've had six of them before, and we've never had an agreement. Anyone else that's had, or has never had an agreement? Why, is this a new procedure for everybody that applies?
That's a fair question. I think because there's, reviewing this as we're moving forward, I think what was presented and what the staff came back, administration with a development agreement, is to make sure that there's no complications for either side of the equation, whether it be the developer or the city, and that we move forward collectively to achieve what it is as a developer, which you're interested in doing, and also the assurances with the city that it stays on track and it is what's proposed. So if you want, if you want to ask, I guess your question is, is it new? I think it's a discussion, and I think it's, it's a tool that we believe is going to be beneficial for all to move forward with. So that's...
And again, this doesn't hinge on whether I sign it or not, but it will, the intention is that it will be required of everyone in the future?
My understanding is that was discussed here, and looking at the administration, a development agreement will follow, follow these in the future.
Okay.
So that's, so it's...
I have no problem with you.
Okay. So I'm kind of going through this to make sure that...
Sure.
...we're answering the questions of what was presented to us by the administration. Give me one second here.
Well, the last, if I may, your honor...
Yes, you would.
The last item was related to submittal of development plan, and also, I think going back to the windows, just again, having a review of, follow-up with the historic district commission as well. So those were the two items. So those were the two items.
If I recall from the Historic District Commission, they had some questions about that. Is it questions that they were willing to have answered? Or is it something that they have to deliberate on again?
Well, I think they're going to ultimately have to deliberate, but Mr. Green has reached out to Mr. Wickenheiser to do a review with himself, and I think the chairman of the HDC, to go back to the board, understanding that Mr. Wickenheiser does prefer not to attend an evening meeting, but, you know, generally, Mr. Green indicated, yeah, they're understanding that, you know, if you were to redo this, those windows from a historically correct perspective, that it kills the feasibility of the project, and so you have to find some accommodation. So that's all they're asking for is, you know, what's the thought into what was proposed and, and then go forward with it from there. So I didn't anticipate that there would be any, any difficulty with that, other than just a few questions. Mr. Green, did I miss anything with that? Okay.
So I'm going to review what the alternatives are, which were presented to the council from the administration. I don't know if you have this or not, but it is on the fact sheet, which is within, posted with the information for the meeting. So one of the items was that is for council's consideration, is it needs to remember that a 60-day days to approve the application. The December 16th meeting is the last regular meeting before the 60-day deadline. That's for council's information. The second one is the city administration strongly urges, or strongly supports the application and encourages approval of the resolution and development agreement. The property sat idle for years, and proposed use would add vibrancy to downtown, consistent with the downtown master plan. Seven is, the next item is, and it's underlined, says, "Approve the Oprah Resolution Development Agreement with Conditions." That's why I'm reading all these. Most of the conditions are addressed in the development agreement. However, I believe the three most important procedural items are, "Receive an affirmative recommendation from the HDC regarding the windows." I think we chatted about that already. "Finalize a permit for the windows," which is still pending, if I understand correct.
Permit is contingent on the HDC. So yes, the building department told me that as soon as the HDC approves it, they have no problem with it.
And then the last, "Submitting a revised set of plans." And I guess that would fall to you. Have they been submitted yet?
And they have not.
Okay. Do we have a timeline that we know that might be?
Two months ago. I'm just pushing the architect in the east. I'm just trying to get him to get it done. So I, honestly, I can't tell you because I can't guarantee it, but it's as soon as I can get him to get it done.
So as in, it says, "City council would need to insert the number of years for the Oprah incentive." The recommendation is currently six years. That came from the committee. The applicant is requesting 12 years based on the amount of investment in relation to the investment job matrix provided by the economic committee. And of course, the last item that's on here is reject the application and request the applicant to resubmit. Alternatives would require the review of the public hearing, all the stuff that's been done previously that we've had here as well. So I'm reviewing that so everybody's clear where we are, what is in place and what is still pending to be put in place. I think that the administration, by their recommendation at least, and the council can have some deliberation on this, is if it is approved as recommended, it would have to have these conditions, and of course, not having a timeframe on one, I think, is important because I wouldn't think we'd want to have the project completely done and then wait and see what comes in. I don't think that's acceptable either. Nor do I think the delays that mentioned, and we've talked about that at the last meeting here, council did regarding some circumstances for that. Whether it be not getting processed in a timely fashion, or changes that are by the interpretations, all those add to the time. So I'm going to ask Mr. Pastu if there's anything else further other than that.
No, I think that's it, Your Honor.
I'll see if there's, thank you, Ken.
Aye, thank you.
There are comments or questions from the council. Council Michelangelo.
Yeah, I've got some comments. I think a lot of this had to do, where we're at today relative to the development agreement, had to do with the litigation that we were involved in with, with Mr. Wickenheiser regarding the United Furniture Building. And one of the issues that came out of that is, is the change in use and what code we were going to use. Either the rehab code or the new construction code. And I think the council has agreed, at least my understanding and principle, is that all existing buildings in the downtown that are historic, we would start using the rehab code and not the new construction code. The other lesson that we learned from the mediation that we were involved in with you was that there is a, there was a breakdown in communication in terms of who is going to do what and when and where. So the idea then came out for projects that are going to be, people are going to ask the council for an Oprah agreement, which is a tax abatement, is that we would have an agreement which would specify the city's responsibilities and then the developers' responsibilities. So we knew what we had to do, and the applicant knew what they had to do. And I think that's a fair way of doing this, because it takes away the subjectivity or the pointing of fingers. If we're not doing our job, then we need to be held accountable for it. If you're not doing your job, then that's on you, not on us. So a lot of this has, we tried to standardize the procedure going forward, okay? The way I look at it, I believe, and I don't know the dates, I'll have to look at Mr. Green, but I think the Oprah application was actually changed from the amounts have increased somewhat. Have they not? So the application during this process has gone up in terms of the request for the tax abatement. So I think the 60-day timeframe is really at issue. If the applicant changes the, the amount of the, the tax abatement, they're basically amending the application for, for consideration. I'm asking about timeframe because if this can get wrapped up in two weeks, I still, from a procedural point of view, it would be nice just to get all of this wrapped up before council has to make a decision relative to the Oprah. That's all I'm saying. Instead of approving it with conditions, we get all the information. So when we ask Mr. Wickenheiser, are the drawings in? Yes. Is the development agreement approved? Yes. Has it been reviewed by the HDC? Yes. And then we can go ahead and make our decision. That's all I have to say, Your Honor.
So I just want to make a review because sitting on, on the committee that reviewed this to begin with, when the Oprah came in, there was an amount that I don't, I didn't bring with me tonight at the last meeting, but if my recollection is correct, it was an amount put in there, it was the, the estimated cost of improvement was $50,000. And of course, then we had the matrix, and I asked the question if the matrix had been shared with the developer, and it had not. So as it got, I said, it's only fair that that be known, and we get a specific amount versus a general amount, because I'm not sure why that was in the number. And of course, that's what comes along with the plans and the additional information. And for the building department's review, is the amount that's proposed for the development match the, the work that's being done or the Oprah request? So we did get a resubmission of that, and if I recall correctly, I think it was $160,000 was the amount in which it was increased to. And then it was a little more detail about what that would entail, which of course, is why that's important, is using, and then, and I understand also that the matrix was shared with the developer, which we will have in place as we move forward in the future, along with the development agreement. And I think why that's important, then, it goes right back to what's going to be done, knowing what the development is and the amount. Then you can look at the chart in the matrix to say whether it does qualify for six years, eight years, 12 years. So I'm only giving that as background, as review, is another reason why we are here, why we are today. And as I say, there is shared responsibility here, but the idea is, it's to the council. So Council Michelangelo had his comments regarding that. I'll see if there's other comments from the other council members as this comes forward. I see Mr. Buds is writing notes too, and I don't ever want to leave out the attorney if I'm missing something or stating something incorrectly. I don't have that matrix sheet, nor do I have the application with me. Councilwoman Jermaine.
So that I'm clear, what we're missing are the updated plans and there's something with the windows, or is that resolved?
Those associated with an HD, the Historic District Commission review and recommendation.
What does that mean?
What's that mean as far as, I think that if I remember, there was one element of the permit from a construction or building standpoint that the building department was looking for, but also the Historic District Commission does review, you know, windows and exterior improvements, you know, within the district itself. And while they're not binding, they will submit a recommendation, and we give that consideration going forward. That's all we would be looking for.
Being vinyl, they may not be in compliance, correct? We don't know.
To you, I think, given the circumstance and the cost associated with restoring it to its original historic condition would be cost prohibitive. The HDC is very understanding and reasonable. They recognize Mr. Wickenheiser has done good work in the past, and from the street level, I suspect they're not all that visible or noticeable. So, you know, can I tell you that they would recommend one way or the other, but they're, they're reasonable people in, in understanding the circumstances and conditions that are associated with those considerations?
So then we're down to the drawings?
Pretty much.
Okay. Thank you.
And the agreement that goes with it, yeah.
Wish that Mr. Wickenheiser has spoken to that here tonight already. I'll see if there's other questions. I do have one more, and it might be for the city attorney, but I'll, Councilwoman Lomore?
Yeah, just, just to clarify that, the Historic District Commission is not, it's a recommendation only. It is not anything binding or setting Mr. Wickenheiser up for failure, basically, because the building department can approve this without the recommendation as well.
They could.
Thank you. That's the only question I wanted to answer.
You know, and again, I don't mean to, if I, Your Honor, I just got to let this, I can't let this go.
Looking for full information.
You know, the alternative to the HDC that we have that submits recommendation is having a certified district, which can be phenomenally prohibitive to redevelopment. This group wants to make sure, and I think it's a good form to go, just to do a review. In a lot of cases, there may be people that are not all that familiar with historic preservation. They can provide counsel and assistance in that regard. So it's not what I would consider, it is probably the least obtrusive and difficult arrangement for trying to preserve your historic neighborhoods in your downtown. So I don't want to give anybody a sense that it's just, it's a highly difficult bureaucratic system that, that's involved. They do provide the support to ensure the preservation without all of the, the difficulty that goes with a certified district.
Councilwoman Whitman?
I would just like to say that I do appreciate all the work that Mr. Wickenheiser has done in the city of Monroe. And I'm very grateful to Jeff and Vince for reaching out and making this work, because that is the ultimate goal, is for Monroe to be recognized for being a historical society. And, you know, we have to think of the future, and do we attract new residents? Do we want people to come downtown and, you know, more shops to open? And the kind of work that Mr. Wickenheiser is doing is the very thing that we're looking for. But I also, I'm also very happy that we're getting paperwork and understanding to where that when a builder comes to do remodeling and to fix up the buildings, they have an idea of what they're looking at, and, and that we can all work together on it because it's a common goal.
So, Councilwoman Vining, go ahead. Remember, it's first opportunities. I do have follow-up with the city attorney, though.
So I've attended a few county meetings where developers and contractors and the like, and business owners are at these meetings. And I know we don't like to talk about it, but Monroe does have a reputation, whether it's true or not, for not being developer-friendly. I've heard it since I've lived in the community and since I've been on the council. So, you know, we, we got to understand that whether, whether the building department is doing something purposely or, or not, that is a perception that's out there. I'm sure we all heard it, whether we want to talk about it or not, it's just a fact. The thing that I want to understand is, so this is on the agenda tonight, saying consideration to, to adopt the Oprah. So is that saying that the administration was comfortable or is comfortable with us adopting this Oprah tonight without those last two items, you know, actually in our hands tonight? Because I thought two weeks ago, we'd have those things in front of us so that we could make the decision. Since we don't have them, and you're saying that the Historic District Commission is a recommendation and not a legislative move that, that they'd be making, were you stating, I read in the fact sheet, that you are saying, so were you saying that you were comfortable with us adopting or refusing this, this Oprah tonight?
If I may, Your Honor, is...
Yeah, with conditions, but I'll let Mr. Pastu speak to what those are.
I am comfortable taking action tonight with the understanding those two items are still to be resolved. You know, in talking with the applicant, you know, I think they can be done, and candidly, you have no agreement until they are. But I do, I think, you know, we've spent the better part of a couple hours in the last two meetings on this topic alone, and, and I think it, you know, we can move forward with that, and I am comfortable with it.
And, and so, Your Honor, we know that Mr. Wickenheiser has a long history of development in the city of Monroe, and we know that he made some moves that some of the council, myself included, didn't necessarily agree with, the, the window permit thing. He gives us a reasoning as to why he, he made the move to secure his building and whatnot. I don't want to be here again when, so the next time we do a project, let's have all this stuff lined up. And that's been an issue that I have discussed in the past with the building department. In some cities, everybody comes to the table around the same time so that things aren't always be, being done in pieces, and you can miss things that way. And I know that, or I thought we were moving towards that type of roundtable gathering with the developers or the contractors, and I hope we can get to that. But, I mean, I think we've talked this thing into the ground, and so, you know...
So I got a comment, I have a comment or question for Mr. Buds, because it comes from Council Michelangelo's comment, because as I read this, and was, it was presented to council, December 16th is the day for the 60-day deadline, so therefore, there's action or there's no action. So I'm looking to Mr. Buds if, if, because there was a resubmission of the Oprah, once the matrix was provided, once we had a clear understanding of the investment that was being done, because the first one, quite honestly, wasn't correct then. So you can't move forward if it's not correct. So there's, and so I say that because there is shared responsibility here. So Mr. Buds, does the date change if there's a resubmission, or is it by that? I'm just curious.
Your Honor, I would say that if a new application or revised application is submitted, that would be a new timeframe, in my opinion, for the city to act. But I would say, as far as this particular application, I believe, and I don't have the exact date in front of me, but I believe it was the last week of October, the first week of November, which would mean that 60-day window would run out before the end of this calendar year, hence the reason for the request for action tonight. So I believe we are presently within the 60 days from the revised application, but that will run out before the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
That helps, because then it doesn't matter, because the timeframe is still before the conclusion of this year, but also before the next meeting of the council. So my next question is, I guess, as was asked, when I asked, what's the timeframe? What's the timeframe that there'll be the, the drawings that are necessary to actually move forward to begin with? And of course, we don't have an answer because it's, the developer's reliant on somebody else to provide that. That said, the administration's making a recommendation to approve with conditions. And if the council moves forward with that recommendation, and the items that are listed here under number seven, I think it's important... under number seven, I think it's important that the conditions also include a timeframe. Because as I said before, we can't get to the end of the project, have it done, and then submit, and then have the plans submitted. Because, quite honestly, and I won't say that Mr. Wickenheiser is this way, but it could be anybody in the future, well, here's the plans, and they meant what I did. That's the backward part of it, I think Councilman Michelangelo is speaking to. So if the council's moving forward to that, I would like to at least include a reasonable condition of time, that there be an expectation that something would be submitted. And I'm leaving that to council to make the motions of what they choose to do. Of course, the motion can be not to accept it as well. Or, I guess, the delayed timeframe has been answered as far as weeks of two or less, because it's going to, six days will, deadline will lapse. So I'll see if there's other comments from council, or anybody that has not made a comment that wishes to. If not, if there's follow-up comments, we'll make it at this time.
Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion here, just to get this off the dime. And it's going to be, the motion's going to be structured in a way that puts the, puts some of the onus on the applicant. Because two weeks ago, we kind of articulated these deficiencies, and really, nothing has happened. So my motion's going to be very simple. I'll make a motion that we consider the obsolete property act incentive for 101 West First Street under the following conditions. If the development agreement and the plans and the HDC review is not completed by the end of this calendar year, the Oprah agreement would be for a two-year tax abatement. If those materials are satisfied to the satisfaction of the city manager and the attorney, then I would recommend a six-year tax abatement.
Well, there's a motion, and there can be discussion. Is there a second? If not, there can be discussion also. I'll make a comment, because Mr. Pastu, you're on the council, so they may ask you something, but I'm not sure I'm going to do that. I think, while I appreciate Councilman Michelangelo's thought to this, I think there's, it's going to have to be with conditions in some fashion. I think a timeframe is as well. We've already heard that it's probably not going to be by the end of the year on the drawings, because I didn't get a sufficient answer, but it was an answer that said unlikely, or I can't remember exactly how it was put, because he's waiting on somebody else. I'm not one to make a motion or accept that with the number of years based on a timeframe of coming in, because we know there's timeframe on this particular project. And again, I'll say it again, there's shared responsibility. And so now we get to the end of it, and then we're going to impose a shorter timeframe of an Oprah. I think the timeframe of the Oprah should be based off of the value, the investment, and what the benefit is to the project versus the complications with the project. So I wouldn't support the choice of terms based on the deadline, because there's long, since this started, that I think complicates that. That's just my view.
If I may, as part of this, this is the problem that we have, is that we are accepting and giving a tax abatement on a piece of property with no guarantee that we're going to have, we're going to have drawings, or we're going to have a signed development agreement. And that is not how this process should work. We are working with taxpayers' money. And I'm sorry, it's like, you got to go to the HDC, go to the HDC. You got to sign a development agreement, at least get with the city attorney or the manager and work out the agreement on the development agreement. And if you got an architect that's not performing, fire him and get one that will. But it shouldn't be upon us to have to say, we're not, we're going to give you a tax abatement, oh, and by the way, we're going to allow you later on to get us all this information. I'm sorry, that's just not how this should work.
I agree it shouldn't work that way, but this is where we are. But at the same time, we have a process in place that I think says this is what we have as far as an Oprah. And the development agreement, the HDC, don't seem to be the problem, it's the plans. So back to what I said earlier, I would like to see if there's a motion that's based on the timeframe of that expectations, to meet what the recommendation from the committee was, was six years. Of course, council has the opportunity to change that, and that's not an issue for me, because that has been done in the past. So there was, I'll just go back, and there's a motion that made by Councilman Michelangelo, I probably shouldn't repeat it if the clerk has it, but I can generalize what it was.
Go ahead.
Okay. That would consider, and Councilman, you can correct me if I don't get it correct, please do. The, that the consideration for the Oprah would be approved with a development agreement, the plans in place, HDA review by the end of this calendar year, and by the end of this calendar year. And if not, then the Oprah agreement will be two years versus six years. Is that concise?
That's correct.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second? There's not a second, so the motion dies. Is there other conversation or motions from council?
Your Honor.
Councilman Felder.
Although I'm not unsympathetic to Councilman Michelangelo's motion, I think the timeline provided is entirely unrealistic and would force it into a two-year agreement. I think at this point, in the month of December, nothing's going to get done. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure when the HDC meets, or if they're meeting again this year. Many committees, I think, cancel their, their meetings that exist around, around the holidays. I would be willing to do a conditional agreement with up to a six-year Oprah, the tax abatement with a longer timeframe. That's my comment.
Okay. It's a comment, not a motion. It appears that the developer wants to make a comment, maybe it's, is it relation to the timeframe and the plans? Because that's where the discussion is currently, I believe, stalled.
And again, please don't take this as some type of an ultimatum or anything like that, because it's not as simply information.
Data fact that you believe.
Yep. The, the return on these buildings is really very little. And I don't remember his name, if someone can tell me. The consultant that we brought in for retail projects to help over the summer, we had our meeting upstairs in City Hall, and we were talking, and somehow it came up about the lease rate per square foot. And I told him that downtown is somewhere in the $6 to $9 range per square foot. And he said, you misunderstand the question. That's what warehouse space goes for. And I said, that's the market we're dealing with, simply is. He said, that's impossible, you can't afford to redo the buildings and get that kind of lease rate. I said, you understand our problem. I said, we can make money off of residential, there is no money in commercial. We've given up the idea of residential in this building, it's all commercial. To be totally honest, part of the reason I bought the building was because it was an eyesore behind the hotel. The roof was falling in, the windows were boarded up. Those problems are already fixed, it looks better already. And again, just being completely blunt, anything less than a 12-year abatement, we simply would lose money. It's just a fact. And so, just so everyone understands, the abatement is how long, the taxes stay the same as they are today. It's just how long the city forgives a tax increase. And so, again, short of a 12-year abatement, I'm just being completely honest, we would probably just let it sit there and use it for storage, for tractors, for clearing snow, and that kind of thing, and we have a parking lot. And it was worth the purchase price at that point. But it just wouldn't make sense for us to put $160,000 in it to make warehouse space rent back with no residential or any chance of making a profit in the future. So whether it's decided on tonight, really, the issue is the prints, which, if we follow my logic, if I don't supply the prints, I can't get a building permit to do the project. If we don't get a building permit to do the project, and therefore, the value would never go up. So it's, that's really an irrelevant point. And as far as the development agreement, we can sign that tonight, I mean, it's irrelevant to me. And so, again.
So I'm just going to make a comment, and I'll, it just seems that we go un-circled then, Ken. We go un-circled because you're, I understand your ask. Your ask is, because your application was a 12-year, and I understand the finance discussion of this. But it's difficult to make recommendations, as I said on the committee, when we didn't know what it was really going to be completely. And now you're saying, because we are going to not approve the 12 years, even though we don't know exactly, that then it's not feasible to do the project. It just seems like it talks around the same issues, just in a different way for me. And I understand, I understand why 12-year is advantageous, and I understand the 12-year, when you talk about recouping your investment. But at the same time, I don't know what the $160,000 is, because I haven't seen the plan. So you're asking for something that we don't know, and that goes a little bit to what Councilman Michelangelo is saying. And I'm confident, knowing that, I won't say it on timeframe, but from the work, but it's, it's a challenge to make decisions if we don't have everything. And that's why I'm looking to council's consideration that's been presented by the administration as far as what a recommendation is. I'm open to what they have to discuss, whether it's supporting or not supporting, and I'll make my decision off of what I think is best.
And I guess, if I'm allowed to speak one more time. I understand where you're coming from, and if you would switch the positions. I don't think a set of plans have ever or are required for an Oprah. And so, again, switching positions, hiring an architect to completely draw out a project, I think everybody knows is tens of thousands of dollars. So you have to invest tens of thousands to develop an idea in order to find out if the city is willing to partner with you and forego some tax increases. And so my point is, is I don't understand the problem with saying, this is our plan for the building, it's all commercial, there is no residential.
Okay.
If that's approved, we already have the plans in process, but say I didn't, if that's approved, then great, I'll move forward and get the plans drawn. I don't understand the need for a set of plans to get approval for, for an Oprah. The granting of an Oprah is on an idea.
Councilman Felder.
Your Honor, I believe I asked this question in our last meeting, on what the enforcement mechanism is to ensure that the, that the amount in the proposal is the amount that actually gets spent in order to justify the abatement.
Right.
And the answer I was given, I believe by you, Mr. Mayor, was that the plans that were submitted were that, that proof of this is the scope of the work that's going to get done, and this is proof that that amount of capital is going to be invested.
I won't say the plans, it would have been the application stated the amount. Therefore, that transitions to what the matrix chart was. I didn't say, I don't know, if I said plans, that's not what, because we don't have them.
Right.
So, but, and of course, you're getting recommendations from the review of the building department and others, and if somebody says, this is the amount of investment I'm going to do, show me that that's what that balances to, and that's why it comes here. Council making a decision of what the terms of years of consideration on Oprah is, is based, you can have a dollar amount, but you should also have the amount to show what it is. And I agree, it could be in a general context, but it's got to at least match, it's going to take this much, because this is what I'm going to put in, in a fashion of a commercial or otherwise. Thanks, Ken. Thank you. This is to council for consideration. Mr. Pastu, am I missing something, anything you wanted to add? I know what you're, I know what the, the council can see what the alternatives are, and we'll have to see if there's a motion, unless you have anything further.
Or the deliberation.
Councilman Lomore.
Your Honor, is it too big of an ask to, I don't know what working with architects is like, per se, but by the end of January, to get some kind of modification to the drawings, would that be a possible solution to getting those drawings in by that timeframe? And if so, then I'd say that would be a reasonable timeframe to give Mr. Wickenheiser to come up with those drawings, finalize the building permit, and basically, give us something to base off of for tonight, to give consideration to the Oprah.
Yeah, that's, that's the point of, I don't have a timeframe, I don't know what that is.
I would think a reasonable timeframe, assuming where they are with the drawings, and I can't speak for Mr. Wickenheiser, but certainly by the end of January, he would hope that they would be able to submit something, and I don't know the level of detail or review that would be required, but depending on the detail of the plans themselves. Did I answer your question?
I'm just looking at the applicant, it sounds like the end of January would be reasonable.
I would think so.
Councilman Michelangelo.
Your Honor, I have a question for Mr. Green. Does the full HDC board, now that they did a preliminary review and they had a list of questions, do they have to reconvene, or is this something that you would do with the chairman administratively, get the answers that they were looking for?
Again, as I indicated a couple of weeks ago when we talked about this, what the HDC was looking for was essentially more information. They make a recommendation back in this particular circumstance. Mr. Wickenheiser, I'm sure we'll tell you the same thing. I contacted him a couple of weeks ago, or several weeks ago, before the HDC meeting, asked him about the windows that they were going in, what kind were they? Came back that they were vinyl. And I said that if he were able to provide, be at the meeting and explain that, I'm sure, given his background, working in downtown on a number of other buildings, he would be able to explain why he picked that particular project, or product, I'm sorry. So that's the kind of information we were looking for. To your question, we did, I talked with the city manager last week, he indicated he had a conversation with Mr. Wickenheiser. I did try to set up a meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't able to connect between then. Myself and Barry Egan, the chairman of the HDC, were going to meet with Mr. Wickenheiser. Ken did call, or emailed me Thursday evening, or Thursday afternoon, I'm sorry, and indicated that he saw my, just saw my email. Unfortunately, I was going to be out on Friday, out of the office, and so I told him I'd try to get back with him early this week, which I haven't had a chance to because of a number of projects that came up today. But hopefully, we'll be able to get together in the next bit. What we would be looking to do is probably take a record, or take something back to the HDC, and we could convene that at any time, as soon as we can get the meeting together. They don't have a set schedule where they have to meet, we've been pretty much calling the HDC to meet when, on an as-needed basis, when we need to.
Your Honor, we got to, we got to move on this. If the council's looking at the end of January, then it should be all or none. Okay? It should be a recommendation on the number of years, subject to getting all the other information in place. If the other information is not here, then the Oprah is going to, we're going to forego the Oprah. But we have to, we have to, we have to be consistent on this, this, this information that we get. So we're asking for, we're asking for a 60, we're asking for a development agreement, we're asking for the revised plans to be submitted for building permit review, and to clarify, or at least appear before the HDC and clarify, and get a recommendation from them. I don't know what the recommendation's going to be, the windows have already been installed. It's kind of a, it's kind of a procedural thing at this point.
I think Mr. Pastu.
Is probably the best that you can.
Yes, you know, so we've already kind of blew by that, that process, and, you know, that, so, Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we award the Oprah in the amount to 101 West First Street for six years, with all of the requirements being the following, the development agreement and the plans, and the review by the HDC be completed by January 30th, 2020.
Second, Your Honor.
This is a motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilman Felder, for the, as stated, if the council needs a repeat of that, I'm looking to the clerk, I know, or myself. No, do you do?
Do.
No, I don't think anybody does. And there's opportunity for final comments or questions. Councilman? Councilman.
On the matrix, is the, for the amount of the investment, is the maestri, does that line up?
The six years was with the original application that was submitted earlier this year. The subsequent one, based on the matrix, would have been, I think, 12 years.
That's correct.
So.
So basically, the 12-year Oprah is not out of the ordinary?
Pretty much been standard. I think, you know, part of our struggle is, well, how do you determine, you know, how to, the number of years. And Mr. Green put together a matrix that has a combination of investment and likely job creation that goes along with it. And based on that matrix that our economic review committee, you know, went with that. And that's where the six years came up. Although I will tell you that we'd said, boy, that seems like not very much with the original applicant based on what we would have understood to be the scope of work. But it was recommended initially at six years. If you went with a higher amount that came subsequent to that, it would be 12.
No other questions? There is a motion by Councilman Michelangelo, supported by Councilman Felder. Somebody need to rehear it.
I have a question. Can we amend the motion?
Well, you can, I guess, at this point, because there's a motion and a second, you can make a comment of what your position is. And you can always ask to have a motion amended, but it's got to be acceptable by the motioner and the second. Is there something you'd like to see changed or amended?
I would like to see it moved to the 12 years.
I agree with that. Well, it's got to, it's got to be, the motioner has to agree and does the second. If not, then it goes to a vote. And if it doesn't pass, there's always the opportunity for a
Another motion.
Second motion. I'm looking to the council.
No, Your Honor, unfortunately, if the materials were in, I could probably get myself to 12. But this has all been a backwards process, and I can't. I just, I just can't do it.
So the motioner's not, then I don't, of course, the second can change or not, so.
Inclined, I'm amenable to the change, but the amendment seems not to be friendly.
So there's a motion and a second. If there's not a withdrawal from the second or the motion, then we need to take a vote, and then we can see where we go.
No, the issue here is, Your Honor, just to, you know, the council can do what it, you know, what you feel in your own, your own heart. But here we are voting on a tax abatement for six or 12 years, not really knowing what the scope of the project is because the drawings aren't done. Okay? And that's not our responsibility. That's the developer's responsibility. So you're asking us to give a tax abatement on a project where the scope is really not yet defined. But it's our fault. No, it's not our fault. And we're not a barrier. I'm sorry. You put all the information together, submit it for review. The Building Department could analyze and say, "Mr. Wickenheiser's actually doing a project that's going to cost $210,000." Or maybe it comes back and the Building Department says, "Actually, what he's doing is going to cost $75,000." And then we have a matrix, and we follow the matrix, and that determines what the years of abatement are. But how can we, as a council, say, "We're going to give you 12 years of abatement? We don't even know what the scope of the project is because the plans aren't completed." That's not, that's not responsible government. But take a vote, take a vote on the motion.
No, I think you raise a point, and I might have a comment to it myself. Councilwoman Germaine.
What happens after the six years? Can he re, can he apply for?
No.
That's the end. That cuts it off. Okay.
I have a question.
Councilwoman Whitman.
What about after the end of January? Like, if he doesn't have anything turned in, he's lost it anyway.
Correct.
There won't be no.
It has to meet the timeline, as was stated. Otherwise, there wouldn't be, the Oprah wouldn't be granted. Mr. Buds has a comment. I always like to hear from the attorney if there's something misstated.
To further complicate the matter, Your Honor, but under the Oprah statute, if a certificate were to be granted for a period of at least one year, but not to exceed 12 years, so if it were along the lines of what's on the floor for the motion, and the number of years is less than 12, the certificate may be subject to review by the legislative body, and the certificate may be extended. The total amount of time for the certificate, including any extensions, cannot exceed 12 years. And the certificate commences, there's more to the statute there. But essentially, if the council so desired, the number of years could be extended, and there should be factors, criteria, and objectives placed in writing at the time the certificate is approved in order to talk about what that extension would be for.
The key word in writing.
Is that at the end of the six years? Or is it, could it be at the end of six months? The reason I ask that, because six years from now, never know who's sitting here.
I think it could be amended shortly thereafter.
Your Honor, the statute says that if the number of years determined by the legislative body is less than 12 years, the review of the certificate for purposes of determining an extension will be based on factors, criteria, and objectives that shall be placed in writing, determined, and approved at the time the certificate is approved by the resolution of the legislative body and sent up to the state tax commission. So that would need to be conditions now that would need to be put in place as to what the factors for the extension would be.
It has to be within this discussion.
Yes, because it needs to be part of the resolution.
Councilwoman Vining.
And so far, the factors are the plans.
Development agreement.
The development agreement. And so we can see if there is $160,000 or whatever the number that qualifies for a 12-year abatement. Are those, I'm sorry, I lost, I lost the line that you said. But are those the factors now? We're putting, John has the fact, the conditions in the motion. So would those qualify as the factors if we see when there is something in front of us that, that the investment is greater or, you know, at least $160,000?
Your Honor, what I could do for you guys is make the motion and clarify it. That we go, we can go six years, January 30th, 2020, with the condition that if the building plans are evaluated by the Building Department, and the cost of construction exceeds $150,000, then we can bump it, we'll bump, we'll agree in the certificate to bump it up to 12-year tax payment.
So you're making that amendment to your motion?
Yeah. I mean, it's.
And Councilman Felder supports it. I want to ask Mr. Buds if that meets the obligation of the language that's in there.
I believe it does, Your Honor. These are factors, criteria, or objectives that would be placed in writing. We'll need to amend the resolution to state that those things need to be provided and that the level of investment would need to be confirmed. If that is done, then I think that meets the statutory requirements for an extension.
And I like it, Your Honor, articulated in the development agreement as well.
Which is just further the written.
The written record.
A written record, so, Councilman.
I know what we're going on here.
I'll make sure you understand it because you're making an important vote regarding something that's not only from Councilman Michelangelo's standpoint of taxes and having an obsolete property, but also developer and their desire to finish a project, but also looking at from a cost, expense, revenue themselves.
Yes, because I know we've done these before, and I don't ever remember them being this complicated. But how, I want to, you know, say to the administration, what do we need to do to make sure we're not back here again asking to consider, approve a development agreement that we don't even have?
We had it two weeks ago.
I can assure you, as long as I'm city manager, this will never happen again.
Yeah, we need to really put in a place how we can avoid something like this happening again.
So there's a motion and a second that's been amended. Does council need clarification? Well, understood where we are.
The clerk would like to hear that dollar amount one more time.
Dollar amount?
The $150,000.
Yeah.
And, Your Honor, just for clarity purposes, so, you know, because this gets televised. My understanding is that the original application was for like $50,000 for a 12-year tax payment. And that's what the EDRC recommended. Based on the mayor's comment about, "Did Mr. Wickenheiser look at the matrix?" After he looked at the matrix, he said, "I want, I'm going to bump it up to 160 so I can get to 12 years." My concern is, is that I want that figure verified. And it's only going to get verified if the plans are reviewed by the Building Department. And the other part is, with all respect for Councilman Vining, this is not all about the city of Monroe. Okay? There's also, the blame for this should get shared equally between the applicant and the city. It's not just the city that is dropping the ball on this. There's lack of information. So I want to be clear about this. And this is why we've been discussing this now for two meetings and for about four hours. So, but, Your Honor, my motion is.
I understand.
My motion is, my motion is six years. Plans have to, six years. And if the plans, the development agreement and the HDC review are completed by January 30th, 2020, then the council will increase that abatement, the years, to 12. If, if the project exceeds $150,000, confirmed by the Building Department.
That's why I understand the motion to be. And I understand it was accepted by the second.
You got, Michelle, is that clear?
Thank you.
I want to call a question. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
I know the administration will follow up that. Mr. Wickenheiser, I know you'll be in contact with some of the items that we can probably move forward on quickly. And as you move forward with your builder, with the plans, that, the timeline. And if there's any discussion, please make sure you get with Mr. Green and Mr. Pastu. Thank you for being here. Mr. Pastu? Jermaine?
I'm going to tell you, I'm phenomenally frustrated. And then part of it is with Mr. Wickenheiser. We try best that we can, and I know it's an easy slam on the Building Department, but there is a common denominator sometimes with yourself. And I can't let what you said earlier go without explanation and to the public. We have many successful contractors that come in and work perfectly fine with the Building Department. We want to work with you, and your work is exceptional. There is no dispute. But from a process standpoint, show us a degree of respect so we can help you through the process. That's all we're asking. This is a good project. The community would be better for it, which is why I support it. But just show us a modicum of respect so we can help you do these projects in an effective and efficient manner. That's our intent. And I keep preaching it with the Building Department, and we've had a number of successes. But we're getting branded as you can't work in this town for this reason. We don't want, we would have to put a stop to that. That's all I'm asking. And I can't, I couldn't let what you said at the start go without some comment. And I wanted your present while, while I said it.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda. And for approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $653,179.04.
Are there items on the consent agenda? The council wishes to have polls for further discussion. Are there items on the consent agenda? Those present here this evening wish to have polls for further discussion. Motion is in order.
All the items under the consent agenda be carried out, recorded by the clerk, and every necessary item, everything that's under the consent agenda be carried out as wrote down here.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and the recommendations, as stated, carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Egwangeli.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lamoore.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please. Councilwoman Comets, Councilman Felder.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. I hope that everyone is able to spend some time with family and reflect on this past year. As we approach this time of year, I believe that we should be paying special attention to the welfare of our neighbors and especially those who are having a tough go of it. I've recently had meetings about removing obstacles on the path to raising residents out of poverty. Among them were consistent housing and reliable transportation. I spoke with some of the partners we have in the community who work on these issues about potential opportunities that we may have to act to improve these conditions in the future. The other issues I see is that UE3 unemployment is floating around 4% for the city, has been for some time in county, which is a number less than those holding multiple jobs in the state. And at the same time, the poverty rate in the city continues at 20%. And the labor force participation rate is at some of the lowest levels since the 1970s. Wages remain stagnant, and it's beginning to be identified as a factor that's stifling growth because aggregate demand isn't increasing as we would expect during a time of traditional growth period. That represents structural and policy failures that lead to these things even being simultaneously possible. This is an economic development issue and a crisis of poverty and opportunity. 20% of U.S. workers are currently contractors. And in a decade forecast suggests that it's going to be over half of the labor force. The state of Michigan, as we know, has not only been, has divorced itself of any responsibility to look after working families, but in many cases, it's deliberately prevented local communities from stepping up to take on that responsibility. I would like to engage Attorney Buds to further examine the trends that exist in terms of general welfare and conditions for those who work in our community and evaluate how we may best be able to address these issues within the legal structure that exists so that we can facilitate a framework that will allow for working people to benefit from our growing economy. I'd like to make it known to council and the community that I plan to address the alleviation of poverty for working families in the city of Monroe in the coming term and request that Mr. Buds be able to engage his time on this issue.
So asking the city attorney requires us his time and revenue, or our revenue, to do that. Specifically, what is it you're asking Mr. Buds to do? Because I'm not sure I understand.
There are some issues that we've been working on together that I've been emailing him back and forth on, but he did not want to dedicate any time on until it had the consent of council to engage those items.
That's a little bit of the problem here, is council members need to bring this to the council to discuss before we engage staff and their, their time, or their, because it is revenue, it's the, the city manager does the operational work for the city. Mr. Buds, by asking him, it's consuming his time, and it's not the right process as well. I appreciate what it is you're bringing up, as being your, uh, items of importance to have a discussion here at council, but giving it to Mr. Buds in this fashion is going to require a work session for the council to decide whether this is a priority, whether this is something we see we have a role to do, and also generate not only the time, but the revenue to do that. I'd like, still like to know what it is where you're asking, because I'm not sure I do, but I, I'm not prepared to, uh, give, weigh in on having the city manager, um, I'm sorry, the city attorney, uh, perform duties and functions. I'm not sure that's where it falls either. I guess we have to have a discussion about it first. Councilman McLeachley?
I would suggest that at some point in the calendar, uh, we allow Councilman Felder an opportunity at one of our work sessions to kind of give us a, an idea of some of the issues that he, he thinks are important, so we have a better understanding of, of what his, uh, his goals and objectives are before we evaluate. I, I agree, I agree with the mayor, we just can't, as council, ask the attorney to explore items on our, that are a personal concern. It's got to be at the direction of council because of the, uh, the amount of, of billable time that would be involved.
I will say there's an opportunity, because as we know, we start the year, one of the things that we have to put on our agendas, in my notes, is what our goals and objectives are. In that discussion, I think that might be an appropriate opportunity, along with all the other items that other council members may have to take on as a challenge, but I'll, I'll wait to my comments, and then I apologize.
Certainly. Doing it with, with the knowledge and consent of council certainly was the objective of bringing it forward this evening, and doing it so at the end of the year before we, uh, proceed into the coming term also was very purposeful. So, I, I very much understand your concerns, and that's kind of how I proceeded the way I did.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm all set. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Whitman?
Merry Christmas. Um, I went to the, um, Opportunity Center, um, yesterday, and I was very impressed with, um, just the feeling when you walked in there, that it, you know, you could tell that, um, people were happy to be, well, the first place you could hear the music jamming out in the parking lot, so it was, uh, it was very upbeat. They had a gentleman there, um, I already forgot his first name, Lloyd Ward, who is, um, going to be doing Tai Chi with the children. And, uh, it's, it's just wonderful to see the difference that's going on down there, and, uh, everyone seems to be on board. I enjoyed myself. Um, I had to leave early, but, um, I didn't want to. I also didn't get to stay for all of the parade, but I hear that it was, um, I watched, I re-watched it on impact, so, but my grandchildren were there, they had a wonderful time. And I wish you all a very merry Christmas and a happy new year, and I'm looking forward to, uh, city council and our new goals and objectives next year, and, um, wish you all the best.
Councilman McLeachley?
No, thank you, Your Honor. My daughter tells me that I've, I've been the original Grinch that stole Christmas. It may, it may have appeared that way, it may have appeared that way tonight, but it's truly not me, so I want to wish everybody in the community a, really a merry Christmas and a, and a safe and happy new year. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Vining?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I had some brief statements, but first I have to, uh, respond to my dear colleague, Mr. Egwangeli. Um, my statements about the building department, um, and were not, uh, made to assign blame, but to acknowledge that there is, uh, was a breakdown in this entire process, um, and that there does exist a perception, whether, um, the perception is right or wrong, the saying is perception is reality. So, um, I think it's important that we address how our citizens, uh, believe things to be because they're not working with the administration every day. They don't know, um, the, uh, efforts that you, uh, made, so I think that, um, I want to make that clear, that it was not to assign blame, uh, one way or the other, uh, but just, just to, uh, bring out the fact that, that there does exist that perception, and how do I know that's true? Because we, as a city, have gone through great measures to change that perception, and I appreciate, um, especially Mr. Green and, uh, Mr. Pastu, um, how they have worked through that process with the, um, uh, the consultants that you had come through, and Mr. Green specifically, we've worked together, um, when people come to me with problems, and, um, I appreciate the way that you addressed them. So, um, I don't want to take anything away from the hard work, um, that I've seen in the six or seven years that I've been here, the changes that I've seen in the building department have been phenomenal. So let's clear that up, it wasn't to assign, um, blame on either side, because I've said every week now here, um, I'm confused. So, I, I'm getting clarity, so I'm not able to say who's, uh, specifically at fault. Um, but I, I want to say I appreciate the work you've done, especially over the last few years, to improve, um, the building department and to ease some of those negative perceptions. Um, on a, on a brighter note, I want to congratulate, uh, Pastor Boone and the Oaks of Righteousness on the upcoming opening of the Sacred Hearts, um, Sacred Oaks Health Center that will be opened at the Oaks Village, um, this January. Of course, Monroe News did a big, um, spread on it, um, you could read more about it in today's newspaper. And also, something I'm really excited about that's been quite a few years in the making is the Oaks Acorn Children's Village, um, that will be also opening in, uh, January, and, um, that's going to provide much-needed free daycare to, um, children in the Monroe community. What I'm most excited about is that, um, the instruction will be, um, based on, um, Montessori style. Montessori style, it's not an accredited Montessori school, but, um, our instructors, um, are certified Montessori, um, instructors, and so will, the children will be, uh, at a real advantage educationally, um, attending that daycare center. There'll be an open house, um, for the daycare center, um, December twenty-ninth, from three to five P.M., so everybody come out. Um, I wanted to point out that, um, Pastor Boone and the Oaks of Righteousness are, um, actually in line with, um, our number one council goal, which is to revitalize neighborhoods, and one of the objectives in that goal is to initiate a plan for the Orchard East Neighborhood redevelopment, so I want to, um, thank them, uh, because they're helping us as a city move towards, um, reaching those goals, so, and happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Councilwoman Germanie?
I'll add on to a segue with that. I got to do several events in the last couple of weeks, and I want to thank all the agencies and organizations that sponsor events in the city and in the county to help kids, like Shop With A Cop, Breakfast With Santa, some senior events that we've been involved with. Thank you for all you do in the city and the county, because it's making a lot of people's Christmases a lot better, and have a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Councilwoman Moore?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, two weeks ago, a great teacher was lost in this community. Wayne Asher, a longtime tennis instructor, passed away. Over the past fourteen years, he dedicated his summer to not only instructing tennis to the youth of Monroe, but encouraging them to be better people. Uh, he will be sorely missed, uh, in, in the, in the future, especially for those reasons. Uh, please check the Riverraisin Battlefield website for some wonderful events upcoming, wine tasting and musical arrangements being some of those. Tickets are on sale now for these events. Sponsorships are also welcome for these events. Uh, on a final note, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's it, Your Honor.
I have a few, uh, comments. First, uh, I want to thank, uh, all that participated and all that came out for the Christmas Magic of Monroe Parade, but also the activities that were going on. I, it was a, a great turnout, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, hopefully as the, as also with the council, opportunities in the future such as that and continuing. So, Councilman Whitman mentioned that, uh, that the MCOP Opportunity Center at ALCC, there was an, uh, was titled the Opportunity Summit. There was a presentation, uh, from Mr. Ward, and really the foundation was, is there's alternatives in, in learning, and, uh, opportunity for future learning can be done in a variety of ways, and a kind of the theme of the item was about health, wealth, and wise. So the health wise was showing there's ways to, uh, prepare yourself, uh, whether youth or adults, and some demonstration regarding that. Wealth, which I thought was interesting, because Mr. Ward, former CEO, uh, while at Maytag, at J, uh, JP Morgan, his credentials, uh, at the Olympic Committee, and CEO of that under, uh, the Bush administration, but, so many, uh, uh, credentials, but he talked about wealth in a very s- short sense, and opportunities that I see start to change, uh, treat, uh, I'm sorry, uh, educate youth and, and others about what that is, not what to do and how to invest, that wasn't what it was about. It was more of a conceptual what it is that you're looking at. If you have a fundamental understanding of what that is, hopefully in your life, you'll make good decisions, and, and they're talking about how to bring that into, uh, uh, youth understanding as they grow, and, uh, uh, older and through, uh, high school and on. The other part was wise, and it was really talking about, uh, being wise in, in your life and, and decisions, so look forward to those opportunities that are coming up at the, uh, Opportunity Center there, uh, for, with the youth, and hopefully, uh, several will have the opportunity to be there. So looking forward to twenty twenty, I think, uh, it kind of mentioned, I think that there's items that I'm looking to Mr. Pastu as well, because, uh, as we get on our schedule here, first, and we know that we start the year off with, uh, goals and objectives. I know that the administration will be sending out some opportunities of dates for when that is. If you recall, we, last time, when it was, found that we're doing those on a Saturday, was beneficial, uh, to sit down and really just, uh, uh, kind of brainstorm, uh, review and reflection of the past two years, but also, uh, the upcoming two years. And with all the council returning, I think we're all up to speed, and we know what some of the objectives are, of where we are, but what we, uh, might see to move forward, but also the, uh, challenges and decisions to be made, and so, uh, just to review, as we know, on January thirteenth is the work session, the public safety assessment, and review on that, so I know we'll be prepared for that. The others, the CIP Capital Improvements Project, we've already had some work sessions on that, but as we get into the first year, the accelerator kind of moves fast, and these things will come up very quickly, so looking at the administration, maybe as a calendar of these, at least these items that we've talked about, and, uh, some other things that may come out of our goals and objective, objectives, discussion of, uh, future items as well, so I see a very, uh, busy start to that. So we talked about CIP, I just want to bring up an item that, uh, is ongoing, as we recall, the, the Student Advisory Council, and I want to thank, uh, Mr. Cochran for, uh, oh, three years ago now, uh, initiating that, and of course, the Clerk Treasure Lavoy's been there, and we started with Monroe Public Schools, and sixth to twelfth graders, kind of like their opportunity to get involved in city government and what their thoughts may be. And then, uh, the second year, uh, the St. Mary's Catholic Central saw that, uh, there was this as well, we had already started, so the, the first year didn't work out, but the last year and this year. So we have students from both our public and, uh, uh, parochial school that are involved in this discussion, they had a meeting this morning, and it was interesting to see what they picked as their priorities, and, and, uh, we had a visitor who said they're thinking so, uh, broad and, and large about what that is. Some of it was about capital improvement, some of it was about parks, some of it was about taxes. It was very, very interesting, so, uh, they're, they're going to be, uh, coming, uh, potentially to, to see us in action, but, uh, but also as they present in the future. I think it's a great opportunity, we all recall the last two years and, and the great projects they did, and hopefully they'll, uh, find ways to get involved here with the city and some, what the youth thought is about our, our objectives and goals. Um, I'll just make my final comment on the discussion tonight, there's always shared responsibility and everything, and I think that's kind of what the, I hear overall from everybody, so, yep, we all need to do better, and we expect better as well as what comes to us, so I think working through this together, we can make things better. So my last comments, of course, as everybody said, you know, this last meeting for the year, but also the, uh, the holidays, but Merry Christmas and looking forward to the new year as we move forward very quickly. Clerk Treasure Lavoy?
Um, just real quickly, we'll be sending out the absentee applications, um, probably right after Christmas, I didn't want them to get lost with the, um, the Christmas cards and all of that, so we'll probably be sending that out. Um, the ballots themselves will go out probably the third week in January, right around January twentieth, so, um, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone, but I'm already way into twenty twenty, so.
Yeah, I know you are.
Yeah, so thank you.
Very good. Mr. Pastu?
Uh, just a follow-up to your item, uh, Pat Weaver in our office, uh, will probably send out some dates, uh, probably Saturdays in late, uh, January to try and see the council availability so we can schedule the, um, strategic goal-setting session, so.
Very good. Close the meeting. Comments from those present, any comments from those present here this evening? Mr. Sell, the finance. Congratulations, by the way, nineteen years, that's wonderful, thanks for all your efforts.
I'm actually here to do my job as an MCOB board member. Uh, for those that don't know, I serve on the MCOB Board of Directors, and, um, excuse me, this afternoon, I received an invitation to a press conference that will be held at the Opportunity Center at ALCC, it's on December eighteenth at four P.M. It's a press conference to be held, uh, with MCOB and Lazy Boy, uh, with a special announcement. That's all I know.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
This Wednesday, December eighteenth at four P.M.
Yeah, four P.M. this Wednesday.
And I will forward the email.
Mr. Pastu? Oh, sorry, Mr. Sell.
What's that?
Further?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Pastu?
I mentioned he'll forward the email, so you'll get a copy of it.
Great. Other comments from those present here this evening? See you in another motion, please.
Motion to adjourn our last meeting of two thousand nineteen.
Support?
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Egwangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germanie?
Yes.
Lamore?
Thank you all.[1633.69]